The Planning Commission meeting. And we will do a voice roll call and you will state your name, that you are present, and where you are teleconferencing from.
All right. Vennant Worf.
I'm Fred Vennant Worf, present. I'm teleconferencing from Holland, Michigan.
Blunt.
Andrew Blunt, present and attending via teleconference from Holland, Michigan.
Deblock.
Dave Deblock, present and teleconferencing from Holland, Michigan.
Kenyon.
Andy Kenyon is present and attending via teleconference from Holland, Michigan.
Raymond.
Then Raymond is present and attending via teleconference from Holland, Michigan.
Box.
Nathan Box, present and attending via teleconference from Holland, Michigan.
And I have not seen Mr. Lozano join yet, and I know Jennifer Owens was unable to make it today.
Hi.
What about me?
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, Brooke Anderson.
Well, it's just the chairperson.
No, that's all.
Details, details.
Apparently, Fred, you need to take over, so. Anderson, present and teleconferencing from Holland, Michigan. All right. Staff comments is the next item on the agenda. The agenda is online, if those in the public would like to follow along. So Jenna, our planning guru for the city of Holland.
Thank you. And I do want to just mention that I did just admit Chairman Luis Lozano into the meeting.
Okay.
Great. So, good afternoon, everybody. Before we start, I do want to address a couple of items, some concerns really that are repetitively mentioned in the communications that have been sent to the planning comment, because it seems that still some misinformation is circulating. And I want to preface this by saying that I don't presume, nor does the planning commission presume, that we'll be able to convince anybody of what, you know, of what the changes are doing, the gentle changes proposed are necessary to make the city of Holland more sustainable. There's definitely different political politics going on in it. There's different backgrounds. So at no point do we think that we'll be able to convince everybody. However, it is critical, and it is my job, to make sure that the public, the planning commission, and ultimately the city council understand at least what the standards mean and what they don't mean. I believe that we have done this already through the media, in-person outreach meetings in the communities, video presentations, interactive website, mailings, study session agendas, and virtual presentations that I've given. But perhaps more specificity to all of this is needed. So a couple of points, really just four points that, and sorry, five, that we've heard quite frequently, that we really feel we need to specify that misinformation. So we keep seeing comments that people don't want to see sweeping, uniform changes made. And the comments say that when now each property is taken into consideration separately. So this is not accurate. We have zone districts already. We've had zone districts since the 1940s, though the names of them have changed and what is allowable in those zone districts have changed, as well as the addition of new zone districts. The zone district, the standards that are required within that zone district are uniform for all properties within that zone district. So, for instance, detached ADUs, accessory dwelling units, detached accessory dwelling units are currently permitted citywide in all zone or zone districts and have been for the last five years. So that anybody in any zone district where a single-family home is located, they can already have an accessory dwelling unit, detached accessory dwelling unit, and that's citywide. So but then in the RTRN zone district, already in all of that zone district, any home can be converted from one to four, or converted into up to four units throughout that whole zone district, except that other standards also need to be met, such as the setbacks, how far the structure, the home can, or the ADU, for instance, can be from the property line. Also, make sure that the parking regulations are met and other standards that come into play as well. So this is uniform. This is uniform in that entire zone district. So what's being proposed is not changing that element of what a zone district is. All it is doing is saying to change the standards. So right now, for instance, in RTRN, the lot sizes that are required are 4,800 square feet per unit of lot size for the two to four units in RTRN. That's throughout the entire zone district. That's uniform. So the proposal is then just to decrease that size of unit, or I'm sorry, that size of land required from the 4,800 square feet to the 3,250 square feet per unit. Again, you know, if you are against that, you know, that's completely understandable, and I don't think that, you know, you'll agree, but at least you can understand that that is what is happening in here. The only thing that I can think of where that information came out was that we were talking about variances early on, and I did mention that one of the reasons for rezoning is when there's a lot of variances that are specific to each property, then we try to respond to those by changing the zone districts. That pertained to the Central Park area, which is the proposed new zoning for the central or cottage neighborhood residential zone district. That does not pertain to the other zone districts. We are talking about uniform zone district blanket changes. The other thing that I want to mention is that folks in R1, existing R1, which is being just proposed to be renamed to LDR, which frankly is generally, will happen regardless, or I shouldn't say will, it's being proposed that the names will change regardless of if the standards themselves change. So this is just the name of a zone district changing from R1 to LDR, but for simplicity, I'll just refer to it as R1 for right now. So folks in R1 keep commenting that they bought into a single-family neighborhood for a reason and that they don't want it to be anything but single-family. However, it needs to be pointed out that for the last five years, like I mentioned previously, detached ADUs have been permitted citywide, which means that right now someone could have two units on the property, again, as long as they follow the requirements, such as one of the units being occupied, owner occupied. So the proposed change is just to allow for attached ADUs as well as the conversions, where one of the units again have to be owner occupied, and they need to follow a host of other requirements that a normal duplex would not need to follow. So also, there's been concerns about, well, that's great, you have these owner, you say that one of the units has to be owner occupied, but how are you going to make sure that that's the case? And questions about short-term rentals. So we have staff that is committed to housing inspections, rental inspections. So if they were to go out to house for an inspection, they talk with the property owner, not with the renter generally. So they would be able to do this very quickly that there is not an owner at the property. So that's first of all with the owner occupied. Short-term rentals, the city has hired a company that researches all of the sites like BRBO, Airbnb, and has been using this company for over a year now, probably two, and looks for all of the units that are being rented out as short-term rentals on these sites. And so then they compare that with the list that we have that states which short-term rentals have a certificate from the city of Holland, and if they are being advertised on any of these platforms, and these are major ones, but there's minor ones that are looked at as well, then they will be notified, and if they do not meet compliance, the city does take them to court. I also keep seeing comments about asking, why is the planning commission only targeting these neighborhoods, and that the focus should be more for apartment buildings? So this effort that is happening is actually citywide. We just haven't talked about the other zone districts in the recent past, because those standards had already been worked out with planning commissioners. So just to give some examples, in addition to the R1 and RTRN zone districts, the planning commission is proposing to change, proposing changes to combine the R3, the existing R3 and R5 zone districts into HGR, high-density residential, which would make it easier for apartments to be constructed and to rezone, and also proposing changes to rezone more properties to HGR to allow for more apartment buildings. So that's just one of the many other zone changes that are being proposed. So in addition to that, for instance, the C2 zone district, which is our commercial highway zone district, that currently would only allow a maximum of two dwelling units, is being changed to be a mixed-use, is being proposed to be changed to a mixed-use zone district, which would allow unlimited dwelling units unless, as long as they meet the other standards, like I mentioned before, the height of setbacks, parking, et cetera. And last example that I want to give is our current existing R2 zone district, which is really for those two units generally, or has traditionally been, I should say. That R2 is being proposed to be renamed to medium-density residential, MDR, and the size of the land in which they could build duplexes on is being proposed to change from 7,200 square feet with a 60-foot width for the lot size to 5,000 square feet and 40-foot width, again, to make it so that more properties are eligible for increasing, gently increasing the amount of units that are available in the zone districts. So lastly, this is kind of the question that, there's been many questions asking, how many people have to oppose these changes for the planning commission to stop proposing them or to stop considering them? And I've expressed to some that it's not a magical number, that the, early on, the staff reports that had mentioned numbers were just to give planning commissioners a little bit of context. There's not a magical number. What the planning commission, and this is directly from our city attorney, what the planning commission recommendation to council needs to balance is the needs, desires, impacts of and on the property owners, the needs, desires, and impact of or on the neighbors, and the goals and objectives of the city. So in doing so, though, they need to be aware of all of the standards that already protect neighborhoods, and ultimately, they need to decide if they believe that the public concerns are valid, given the full context, and balance those with the goals that the city has already established. So the planning commission, per the attorney, should give some consideration to the political issues that remain, but is really tasked with concentrating on the planning aspects, namely, if the current or the proposed standards of the zone districts are more appropriate in addressing the needs of the day or not. And then city council is tasked with all of this, this balancing, and also with handling more of the political issues and policies to a larger extent than the planning commission is. So a couple of next steps, and then I will turn the meeting back over to Chair Brooke Anderson. An updated draft UDO will be up on our website, www.hollandudo.com, by the end of the day, Friday, this Friday, January 29. Staff is working to get the final articles finished. There's 14 articles sent over to our consultant to format them. They, the fully formatted version will then be available on our website, February 23. Planning commission will review the formatted items that we already do have on February 9th at the study session of their regular meeting, and then February 23rd, the remainder of that document. And then the consultants will make whatever edits are necessary based on planning commission and staff comment, and then the final draft will be posted with the agenda packet for planning commission's March 9th meeting, where they will have a public hearing and discussion, and possibly, though not necessarily, make a recommendation of approval to council. After that recommendation of approval is made, it'll go to council, who will then by law have at least one public here. With that, I will turn it back over to Brooke to begin the public comment. Thank you.
Thanks, Jenna. I really appreciate the clarification as well on our role as the planning commission and the council's role. So we will move on to public comment at this time. Jenna, do you mind taking it off of screen share, or do you want that up there?
Oh, sorry. I can take that option.
Or it's up to you, either one.
No, I can take it off, no problem.
Okay. Makes it easier for me to see everybody on the screen for public.
Perfect.
At this time, we'll have public comment. If you would like to say something, please just hold your hand up so I can see you, and I will call on you, and Mallory will unmute you, and you'll have a couple minutes to speak. I'm going to have a timer. Please state your name and address for the record. So we will start public comment at this time. I see Warren Wortley. There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, I'm, I go by Jay. I'm Jay Wortley. I live at 311 West 12th Street, and I am opposed to the changes proposed in the UDO regarding the current traditional residential neighborhood. My wife and I fell in love with the character and charm of Holland's older Cork neighborhoods. As a result, we bought a 100-year-old house, and over the past two years, we have spent a lot of time and a lot of money fixing it up, and hopefully, in our small way, we have helped preserve the character and charm of our neighborhood. The proposed changes in the UDO will neither preserve the character or charm of our neighborhood. The UDO will allow larger multifamily units to be built on smaller lot sizes. Lot sizes are already very small in our neighborhood, and the increased density and reducing the green space will only undermine the character and charm of this area. In addition, allowing more multifamily units to be built will increase the number of rental units in the older neighborhoods. Rental units are already very prevalent in this area, and like it or not, rental units tend not to be maintained as well as owner-occupied housing units. The city is not doing a very good job at the present time, making sure that rental units are maintained at an adequate level. Increasing rental units will only erode the character and charm of our neighborhoods. And in addition, I personally, I can't believe the major zoning changes are being considered in the middle of a pandemic. Residents of Holland, like people all over the rest of the world, obviously have more serious issues that they're feeling, that they're facing right now. Given the health and economic issues facing all of us, it's difficult to get the word out, just to describe these proposed changes. I hope wisdom will prevail, and at a minimum, the pause button would be hit on the UDO until the pandemic is over, at which time residents of Holland will be able to give it the attention that it deserves. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wortley. I see Stacy. There we go.
Thanks. I'm Stacy Heard. I live at 230 West 11th Street in the historic district of the TNR. I have two points here. First point talks about trust, and I start by quoting a recent Holland Sentinel article. Holland sets priorities for the 2021 year. City council member lamented that the public only pays attention to city issues when we step on their toes. Another member said the growing distrust at all levels of government is a concern for him. This proposed UDO is a large reason for the current mistrust. Some examples, you ask residents to be okay with an increase in rentals in their neighborhood when you have been unable or unwilling to help us solve major issues with the ones that already exist and are not holding landlords and their properties to a high enough standard. You ask residents to trust that the increase in parking and traffic by increasing density will not be a problem when you have not been able to solve the current issues with both we have been asking for help with for years. You ask residents to get behind a plan that by your own admission will bring down the value of our homes, but then are confused as to why we don't trust the government. Point number two talks about the difference between needs and wants. We all would agree that housing that is safe and affordable is a need that everyone should be concerned with providing for all. The city argues that additional housing needs to be located close to downtown to provide walkable access for people that work there. This is unproven. Have you talked to people that work downtown about housing to back this up with numbers for additional units needed? Adding more downtown housing will not meet the goal of a walkable community without grocery stores, laundry mats, hardware stores, or sufficient public transportation to make that possible. Therefore, the things that are walkable are amenities like boutiques and restaurants, easy access to which I consider a want, not a need, and I don't feel obligated to sacrifice my way of life because others also want the lifestyle that I've worked hard for. It makes more sense to develop housing close to grocery stores and industries that employ the largest number of people, since the reality is Holland is not a big enough metropolis to embody a one-or-no-car household. If the city is convinced that more housing needs to be located downtown, it's your job to make that happen without negatively impacting current residents. More $300,000-plus condos north of downtown continue to be green-lighted while expecting residents elsewhere to absorb all of the cost of this supposed need. Steph is aware of city-owned undeveloped land north of downtown that could accommodate more housing and affordable needs. I see the potential there for a whole walkable community that would include a grocery store, laundry mat, hardware store, et cetera, that would fit with the vision of a car-free lifestyle Steph keeps mentioning. And that's it.
That was exactly three minutes, Stacy. Thank you very much. I see John Canfield. Mallory is going to unmute you here.
Well, this is where we live, just as far as a little context, 189 West 12th Street.
Oh, I walked by your.
Here in 1988, when I came to Herman Miller as Director of Quality. Since 1990, I've been an independent management consultant all around the world, and I very much appreciate living in Holland. At one time, just about the time we moved in, there was an awful lot of work done around working to preserve the neighborhood that we chose to not only be part of, but also to invest in over the long term. I don't think that someone who would be coming to Holland to check it out would drive down 16th Street to show off our best neighborhoods, but it might go down West 12th or similar. You might be able to help me understand who I can talk to about some of the questions that I have. I am assuming from the previous reason that the rezoning does affect the Holland Historic District.
Yes.
Okay. How many residents have expressed a no to any of the rezoning in neighborhood of their residences? And this might refer to the survey that was sent to Mayor Box about how many people have said, please don't do it?
Brooke, I would advise, Brooke, I would advise, we're not into give and take here. This is one way.
Just let me know who I can ask these, because I also want to know how many people have said, yes, please change the rezoning in the Holland Historic District. You know, again, when I'm done here, just tell me who I can ask these from. A management consultant always looks at an alternative, as a possible solution, and I'm wondering what the problem is that rezoning is the solution and what other solutions may well be available? Because this one, at least in this particular public comment, is fairly consistent. Our former mayor, Al McGeehan, also wrote a letter discouraging this particular move, as well as the survey that I think that another mayor may have been involved in. I don't want Holland to be like Chicago. You know, some of the changes that come along, you know, we need to be cool, we need to be like somebody else. That's not for me. I like living here so we can be who we are. Let's see here. We talked about the enforcement of the laws. I just wonder where the money changes, you know, follow the money in this. So who can I talk to soon about some of my questions? So I would have some confidence that, in fact, your group is working to preserve our neighborhoods.
So the person who spoke earlier, that was Mark Vander Plu, John.
Yeah.
Works at City Hall. You are more than welcome to contact him.
I will do that.
All right. Thank you, John.
You bet.
Brooke?
Yes, Dave.
I've been trying to signal you, but I believe when we started the meeting, we said two minutes.
Yes.
And you've been doing three.
Yeah, thanks, Dave.
Thank you. Yes, it will only increase our meeting by an extra 50%.
Oh, I know. I'm aware. Thank you very much. I see Fred Floberg. There you go.
Yep, thanks, Brooke, and good afternoon. And this is partially in response to some of those who've spoken prior to me here, and endorse all their comments, but there's some answers to questions they've asked. This morning, I forwarded to the city council and the planning committee a petition that was signed by 184 residents who opposed the rezoning proposal. The signers came from a broad range of neighborhoods affected by the proposal. That was the result of less than one week's grassroots effort. More signatures arrived constantly, and almost everyone who responds is in opposition to the plan. The number is now over 200 and growing. In this process, we've learned several important things. Number one, most residents had no idea this rezoning was in the works. The yellow postcard only misled them into thinking that upzoning was a good thing, not something that would increase the density of their neighborhoods and reduce the value of their property. Number two, most residents are shocked to find out the details of the plan, and upon learning those details, they quickly add their names and addresses to the list of those opposing the plan. Number three, most residents are surprised that their elected officials, whom they have entrusted with the care and well-being of the city, would try to slide this radical change by them in the middle of a pandemic, which restricts communication and effective input by residents. Our petition to the city planners is simple: abandon this rezoning effort. Don't ignore us. Don't poo-poo us. Don't patronize us with we are all neighbors, or we know what's best for the community. Don't tell us you know better. Don't try and assure us that the rezoning is no big deal. We know better, and we don't believe you. Please stop wasting your time and our money. Pull the plug. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. And just for clarification, we are your neighbors, and we never said that we know better, so we hope that we can continue to work together. Mr. Lubbers, I'm seeing two of you. I don't know why. Do you have two devices on? Because that's going to cause some sound issues, so you're going to have to log out of one of them. Do you have two devices on? Because that's going to cause some sound issues. So you're going to have to log out of one of them. So I see one that says iPhone. Mallory, do you see that? There we go. So the M lovers, Mallory.
Hi, Brooke. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, gotcha.
Brooke, will you come back to me after the next one? I'm having some internet trouble.
Sure. No problem. Yep. I see Megan Moss.
Brooke, if you can hear me, I'm going to come back in on another phone, and I'll raise my phone. I apologize.
Okay. Megan Moss. Mallory will unmute you. There we go.
Thank you. Thank you, Brooke. Thanks to everybody that is joining in on this conversation. I love what people had to say about neighbors. I don't live in the city of Holland, but I do work in the city of Holland and very invested in our community. And I'm grateful to see so many people are as invested as I am in wanting to join in on this. And also grateful for the fact that even though despite it's more challenging to communicate about challenging things, that everybody figured out how to do that today and made it here so that they could share their opinions and their perspectives. Also grateful to hear from so many people that live in the beautiful historic district and have invested in making our community beautiful. That's really wonderful. So I'm here today to share some perspectives. I am by no means an expert in this area, but I do work for an organization that allows me to see closely what it's like for people who are experiencing housing insecurity and and literal homelessness, and that's Community Action House. The pandemic, I've noticed, has forced us to meet greater needs that we've seen in our community right now. Several of you have mentioned that they're shocked that we would be bringing this up in a pandemic, but I can tell you we are seeing greater needs than we've ever seen in this community before because of what we've all been experiencing. And this seems like like the most appropriate time ever to continue to have discussions about how to meet growing needs in our community. I will say that we have done so much to meet these needs in the short term, and many of you here on this call have been part of those discussions and solving these problems, sometimes in very short-term ways, but we're here talking about what long-term solutions look like. And I've had the, like I said, the opportunity and the privilege to work for Community Action House for the last seven years and in various roles. Sometimes that's meant working with families that have been experiencing homelessness. And now it means our organization is working closely with folks in a street outreach program. This means people are living in places not meant for human habitation. Before the pandemic, we had a two-person strong team, and now we have five people serving in this way. And I've seen firsthand the investment it takes to get one person who's precariously housed or literally homeless into housing. The challenges are very real, and it takes a really big investment of time.
Thank you, Megan. Sorry. But Megan, I would encourage you to write a letter and just send it to Mark or Jenna, and their email addresses are on the City of Holland website.
I definitely will. Thank you, Brooke. Thanks, Megan. Take care.
I see Lisa Caston. And there you go, Lisa.
Lisa Caston, two zero six West Eleventh Street. Per Jenna's clarification, I completely understand that two, three, and four unit conversions are currently allowed in our T N R neighborhood. What I'm opposed to at this point are the reductions of lot size requirements will allow more of these on smaller spaces. I've lived in this neighborhood for twenty-five years. I am actually considered low-income, so I'm not from my heart trying to keep anyone out of any places of need. There are many valid reasons that residents have showed to not support these reductions and lot size requirements as proposed in the U D O. I just wanted to offer one more quickly. I ask you to look just at the bigger picture and wait to observe the housing projects that are currently being completed, breaking ground, or in the near future of one to three years. They've been published for everyone. We know that they're happening or coming down the line. There are currently five projects just within a six to ten-block area of my neighborhood, which does surround downtown Holland. And this isn't even taking into consideration the waterfront Holland project that just received seventy-five thousand approval for active search of developers, which will also affect us down the line. I'm just asking why we do not pause and wait to see these projects, how they add to housing stock, how they address needs, what effects or unintended consequences may come from them before making changes that you cannot easily come back from. It seems like everyone is motivated from a heart, a really good place, and there's a very real need. We can all agree on that. But I feel like we're rushing to find housing solutions but not taking time to see the results of current projects. I ask that you please take the time to listen now and not make these zoning changes until you can measure results and the effects that these may have on those already living here. And I thank you all for the work you're doing. I know it is not easy. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. All right. Brooke, as a reminder, Mr. Lubbers has come back. I'm sorry. I was flipping through the pages here. Can you find him, Mallory? There we go. She's nodding. Yes.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay? I'm so sorry about that. Okay, I'll try to make up some time here. Hey, I just want to chime in and thank you all for all your hard work. My name is Michael Lubbers from twelve hundred Beach Drive in the Central Park neighborhood, the C N R Zone District. I just want to put a special thanks out there to Mark Vander Pluig and to Dan Tayle for being so responsive and collaborative with our neighborhood. They've actually helped us find ways to make our zoning better for the future, and we believe they they do share our goals with the adoption of U D O. But to that end, we do believe that we have been very flexible as a neighborhood in terms of understanding and working with the staff's compromises. And those have been presented to us a few times, and you're going to see some updates today that the staff is recommending to Planning Commission. I, for one, and a few of my neighbors for sure, would appreciate taking another look at the front yard setback. It's a technical little piece, but you're recommending twenty feet. We are asking for twenty-five feet. So you could say it's just five feet, but the reason we're asking is we get that twenty feet is essentially just the length of a parking space. But within Central Park, it's a fact that our right-of-ways are not all thirty-three foot wide. Some of them are, but in front of my house, Beach Drive is only twenty-three feet wide. East End Drive is only twenty feet wide. That's not the width of the streets. Our streets are only fifteen to sixteen feet wide. Our issues in Central Park are just very different than the rest of Holland. And, you know, I know we're all along for the same ride, and we're supporting each other. But, you know, looking at our own situation, we're asking that just this five feet is reconsidered today. But again, we do want to thank you for working so hard with us. It really has meant a lot to our neighborhood. We know this is very difficult. We're all working this third and fourth job to get this done. So I want everyone out there to know how hard everyone is working. It it's rough, but at the same time, we want to thank you for helping us. So that request, that additional five feet, is really where we stand today. Otherwise, we support where you're at. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
You bet.
I have Donna Short. Donna Short, I see your hand up. I don't have video, which is fine. Just need to state your name and address once you're unmuted. Looks like you're unmuted.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. Donna and Mike Short. We live at eight ten Merle Avenue, south of Thirty-second, in the southwest side of Holland. Thank you for the meeting today. I'll be reading something that I put together earlier. John James Audubon once said, "A true conservationist is a man who knows that the world is not given by his fathers, but borrowed from his children." Having this quote, I think it's important for everyone to remember that any city planning should be done specifically with the future generation in mind. Cities often infer by the naming of their new and improved zoning that planning is done for the future. For example, the twenty forty plan of Minneapolis, Minnesota. However, I'm doubtful that that is true. Whole companies exist primarily to consult and to assist with changes in municipal planning codes. Public comments related to municipal zoning code changes show that residents feel harmed by the proposed Unified Development Ordinance Codes. Once again, for example, I cite the Minneapolis twenty forty plan. Let me share a bit of humor with everyone. Joan Rivers once joked, "I told my mother-in-law that my house was her house, and she said, 'Get the hell off my property.'" Mr. Mayor, City Council members, and Planning Committee members, my plea is that you not only listen, but also that you hear our stated concerns. I think that a very significant number of people with within Holland are thinking to ourselves that we are losing your attention. Consider the recent text changes to the proposed U D O, which removed the word duplexes and instead name a duplex a conversion because it is made out of an existing property.
Thank you, Mr. Short. I have a Jim McKnight I saw with the hand up. And Dale, I've got you next, and Veronica, I've got you down. Jim McKnight.
All right. Hopefully you can hear me okay. Thanks for everybody's work on this, and I'm just going to keep it short. I just wanted to say thank you for everybody that went before me, and I, like many other people, am opposed to the U N O. I just don't want to see, especially my issue is with rentals that are not owner-occupied. That's given our our neighborhood so many problems. And I would hate to see any changes that would negatively affect the neighborhood. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jim.
All right.
And Dale Hoskins. There we go.
I'm Dale Hoskins, and I love living in the Historic District, the new T N R Zone at two sixty-two West Twelfth. I appreciate the need for unified development ordinance, but I can't support the direction that its current form is moving our city. Your plan is experimenting with our neighborhoods using ideas that may work and other contexts, but you do not know how they will impact our neighborhoods. The urgency of housing needs is not an excuse to move quickly in a wrong-headed direction. That's irreversible. Other than increasing housing stock, most of your hoped-for impacts are speculative. For example, you don't know if your proposal will create, quote, "walkable and complete neighborhoods" where its residents actually choose to live, work, shop, and play, even to the extent that their total vehicle miles drop. Nor do you know if their infrastructures can be modified to support the increased density or if their property values will increase or if the residents can see how the charm of their beloved neighborhood is being preserved as they watch lawns being replaced by concrete buildings and more and more vehicles. And you don't mention how your densification might affect the crime rate. I have a suggestion. Try your experiment on a limited scale. Find neighborhoods that could be readily developed and are willing to submit to your densification plans. Monitor them for a few years so you can showcase them for all to see how these neighborhoods are resilient enough to thrive under your strategy. The neighborhoods surrounding Washington Square or Columbia One Stop and Me Favorita Grocery might work well if they're willing. If the experiment demonstrates what you seem to be promising, then you will sell it. But if it creates more problems than it solves, then we all have learned a lesson. But these four unfortunate neighborhoods will be stuck with a situation that will be extremely difficult for them to restore. Please back off of your densification efforts and process a sensible U D O. You inherited a beautiful city in which you rightly proclaimed, and we get to live here. Please keep it that way. Thank you for letting me speak today.
Thank you. And then I have Veronica. And then Carolyn, I see you. And Lisa's iPad. So Veronica. Oh, sorry. Let's see here. Mallory is going to unmute you, Veronica. She's going to ask you permission. I think you have to click on something to unmute. There we go.
Thank you. Veronica Blayman, eleven eighty-five Beach Drive in the Central Park neighborhood. I'd like to reiterate that we have worked hard, and we really appreciate the collaboration of Mark and Dan working closely with us to refine the zoning language that helps protect our unique cottage neighborhood from congestion and overdevelopment. We believe we're in a good place due to compromise on both parties. The only outstanding item that Michael mentioned earlier is a suggested twenty-foot setback. Central Park requested a twenty-five-foot compromise due to the fact that our streets are significantly more narrow than the regular city streets. As Michael mentioned, it is not consistently thirty-three-foot right-of-way. And our street size goes down to a twenty-foot right-of-way and even a fifteen-foot actual size. Because of these unusually narrow streets, we have issues with first responders, with garbage haulers, with utility trucks. And it just creates a lot of congestion. We are trying to prevent the escalation of this problem with the future development by asking for the twenty-five-foot minimum setback rather than twenty. If this is incorporated, it'll allow our residents more ability to keep their cars, trash, and leaves out of the street while allowing for maneuvering around our personal vehicles. This is an important safety and congestion issue that will affect the future of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Veronica. And Carolyn. Mallory will unmute you, and then you can state your name and address for the record. Mallory is going to request that you unmute, and you have to click on that. Should pop up on your screen there. There we go.
Okay, hello.
Hi.
Jack and Carolyn Marcus. We live at one thirty-one East Twenty-Sixth Street. We have lived here for about twenty-five years, and we've lived in Holland for fifty years. We oppose the rezoning of our property. We feel that by doing that, you would, by adding duplexes and rentals, you would be devaluing our property. We're feeling that if that happens, people will move out. And it's going to be bad not only for the culture and tradition of our neighborhood, but it's going to be bad for our schools. I think Holland Public Schools are already having difficulty, and this would just enforce bad things. It would be bad for our economy and bad for our businesses. And I'm really opposed to rushing this through during a pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. And I had Lisa's iPad.
Here we go. Lisa Gajowski, eleven ninety-four Lakeview Drive. I've lived my entire life in Holland. I actually grew up ten eighty-six in Meadow Lane, which is now West Twenty-seventh Street. And the reason I purchased my home on Lakeview Drive was for a summer home. And so I know it's loud there in the summer. I get to hear fireworks now, which I totally disagree with now that there's fireworks, but it's kind of nice listening to the boats and stuff on the water. I'm concerned about the property value dropping. I knew when I purchased my home that I would probably have to go through a major remodel because this year it turns a hundred years old. And I love the fact that it's a hundred years old. So I am working with an architect right now. He, of course, doesn't have a problem with any of the zoning changes, probably because it makes it easier for him, but I think it's good that anyone wanting to do any type of a change have the people within three hundred feet get notice and have an input when you start the plans out to begin with. Again, I knew when I purchased my home that if I had to live within the footprint of that home, if I wasn't able to extend. if I wasn't able to extend any setbacks or get any variance on anything that I wanted to do. And I'm just concerned with more cars, more noise, and just, yeah, changing it. Because we all saw what happened on South Shore Drive. That was not good. And a lot of people's view got blocked of the lake. That wasn't good. And it all happened before anybody could put anything in place. So I appreciate Mike Lubbers and the work that he's doing in our Central Park neighborhood, and I thank you for the time to speak.
Thank you, Lisa. I see Deanne Hooksima. Sorry. And there you go, Deanne. Deanne, are you there? Deanne, I can hear you. Oh, no, I can't. You're unmuted, though. I'm not sure what's going on, but I can't hear you right now. Maybe we can try again later. I'll try right after the next one, okay? Esther Listacy, is that your hand up? Yes, okay. Mallory will unmute you. Esther, in just a second here. There we go.
Hi, my name is Esther Listacy, and I've lived at 554 Easton Drive in the Central Park neighborhood or the CNR Zone District for 22 years. I want to reiterate that the opportunity to work with Mark Vanderpluug and Dan over the past few months is very much appreciated. And like some of my Central Park neighbors who have spoken, I support the changes as of today within the CNR with the only exception being the proposed 20-foot front yard setback. As has been shared, we have requested that the front yard setback be changed to 25-foot. And the safety reasons are really important. As has been stated, right-of-ways here are sometimes only 20 feet, and street widths are just 15. When leaves, trash cans, snow piles, and visitor vehicles are pushed into the narrow streets, it becomes an obstacle course to safely navigate. And as a result, cars often have to stop or back up to successfully pass alongside one another when there's an oncoming car. Emergency vehicles are even more challenged due to their scale. And even our pedestrians find themselves confronted by safety issues due to the congestion issues on their daily walk. So I am very concerned about the future of Central Park and do not want things to get worse than what we have today. We accept our current situation, however, we need the 25-foot front yard setback to help alleviate and not exacerbate existing issues in the future and to protect the safety of our neighborhood. Your help on this will be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. I just saw a hand. Where'd it go? Deanne, want to try again? Technology is supposed to help us, right?
There it is.
There we go.
Can you hear me now? I fixed it. I don't know what it was. Okay, thanks. I'm gonna kind of change topic just a little bit, because we have a concern over an issue. Pardon?
Can you state your name and address for the record, Deanne? Sorry.
Oh, sorry. Deanne Hooksima, 17 West 13th Street. And yeah, we have a concern that we feel is not only impacting one neighborhood, but will impact multiple neighborhoods within the city. And it has to do with the front yard and secondary side setbacks for NMU properties. The setbacks are set to a minimum of two feet and a maximum of six feet. And we don't understand why those minimums and maximums are so much smaller than pretty much any other district within the city. Most of these NMU properties are a single property. It's not an eight-street. It's not multi-properities. It's a single property that is completely surrounded by a residential neighborhood. If you look at the number of properties, we're only talking about maybe 50 to 75 properties throughout the city that are sitting within hundreds and thousands of other properties. If most of these seem to be within a TNR-zoned neighborhood, TNR zones are required to have seven to 10-feet setbacks at a minimum. Why do these NMUs have to be allowed to be so close to the sidewalk, much closer than any surrounding structure? The only two reasons that we have been told have to do with that they are commercial and that they have to be walkable. I don't understand why a small setback affects whether a property can be commercial. You can have a commercial property with a setback of six feet. You can have a commercial property with a setback of 10 feet. You can have a commercial property with a setback of 20 feet. When it comes to walkable, I understand having these types of properties, these mixed use within a neighborhood, can be a good thing. I don't have a problem with that. But walkable isn't only a destination. Walkable is, snow melt makes the city walkable. Being able to just move around with less traffic, less noise, makes things walkable. These properties...
Thank you very much. All right, Kathleen Bauma. There we go.
Hi.
Hi.
I live on basically the edge of the city of Holland, Old Orchard and Heather Drive, 1385 Heather Drive. You can see behind me. Well, I don't know where my picture went, but lots of trees, big lots. It seems like you're treating the entire city in carte blanche in the same way. Even us at the very edge of the city of Holland, that the higher density rules will change. There won't be these vistas of trees. And I don't understand why it's so carte blanche through the entire city. I just, I don't agree with it. I don't agree with higher density. So, yeah. And I support everybody else's view. And we are in Central Park, Greater Central Park. So just south of the cottage neighborhood. And you know, somebody said it was political, one of your staff people, and I'm like, this isn't political. This is about where we live. It's not whether we're Republican or Democrat. It's about our homes, where we purchase, our families that we raised here. It's not political at all. So I didn't understand that statement that was made earlier. That's it.
Thank you, Kathleen. I just want to clarify that she wasn't saying that it was a political issue, that the role of the Planning Commission is to look at the compatibility between this new rezoning and the master plan for the city, and that the City Council will come at it from a different point of view and more of a political point of view. Not a Republican-Democrat political point of view, but more of a policy point of view that the city would adopt in its policies. I know, right now, it's political issues are really tense. So when we use the word political, it can get a little confusing. All right. Do I see any other hands? I see Kim DeYoung. Mallory will unmute you here. There we go.
Hi, good afternoon. First of all, thank you for your work, and I appreciate...
For the record.
What's that? Oh, I'm so sorry. Kim DeYoung. I'm at 200 West 12th Street. Last time I did speak about rental properties and my concerns with that, I hope and trust that that is being addressed. This in part is also regarding the rental properties because it's regarding the zoning decrease in units. For example, the two units, three unit, and four units that are currently allowed in the TNR traditional neighborhood residential zone. My concern is, if you look at the unit size, the existing right now for two units is 9,600 square feet. And Jenna, you mentioned it was going to be lowered. Just looking at the actual numbers, the proposed is 6,500 square feet. And feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but that's, you know, 3,100 square feet smaller. And we already have quite small lots. So that's a really small amount of space.
I'm sorry, to clarify, that's 3,250 square feet per unit. So two units would be 6,500.
Yes, that I under... Yes, I understand that. And three units, what is existing is 14,400, is reduced. The proposed is 9,750, and it goes on that to the four units as well, is 6,000 square feet more than required, less space required. My concern is in large part about the vehicles and the cars. Reducing these lot size requirements would change the character of our neighborhood because it increases the number of people, cars, and noise and pollution. And when our neighborhood was built in 1900, some of our houses, none, to very few households even owned cars. Many of us had near... And currently, many of us have narrow driveways and even shared driveways. I looked up some census data, and according to some census data that I found, and I can forward this to everyone as well on the commission, that there's about 1.8 vehicles available per US household. That was in 2016. Right now, you're planning for one parking space per unit, and we have data that shows 1.8 vehicles available. I'd like to finish talking just because I was interrupted. I confirmed...
Pause it, Kim, and added 15 seconds and paused it to you. So when Jenna...
I have one more paragraph. If I could please read it, that would be great. It's important. Thank you. Okay, so I confirmed these statistics with Zeke Alejos, a State Farm Agency owner here in Holland. And he said, "In Holland, the average is two to 2.5 cars per household." He also said that most of his clients are Hispanic, and they live in multi-generational households. Their average is much higher at three, four, and five cars per household. This has been our experience. John Shay can tell you, he has six cars in a multi-generational home right next to him. He's on the Historic District Commission member, I believe. I also looked up some Pew Research that says that multi-generational households is a trend that is increasing with record numbers. And not just with our Hispanics and Asians, but even with whites as well. So this is a trend that we're having where car units and houses or households are requiring are typically having two, two, three, four, and even five cars. So to plan for one unit, one parking space per unit doesn't seem to match the statistics or the mathematical science. So thank you so much.
All right. Jim DeBoer, I see a hand on your icon. There we go. Mallory, yep, there we go.
You're right. Thank you so much. And thank you for everybody, for listening to residents, and for you as a Planning Commission, your work on Udo, because much of Udo is good. I believe that though the shrinking lots that can have attached and detached ADUs as well as conversions will be viewed as a mistake by future generations of leaders of the city. We know that the changes will not happen overnight, but they will happen. We all know it. While I think it's great to have homeowner occupied, I believe that when you shrink the distance that's needed between homes, decrease the square footage needed in front of the house, as well as the size of the entire lot becomes problematic on many accounts. Please keep the distances as they are listed today in the zoning. And I feel that additional traffic and parking, as many have said, will create issues not only on the street, but will become issues as well on their properties, front yard and backyard, because they have to pave it to put the cars there. So again, we ask that you look at the Udo mission. The overarching goals are stated on the website, which I quote, "to protect Holland's character and charm and reflect the vision of Holland residents." Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. All right. One last... I'm not seeing any hands. Okay. Mallory, are you good? Where did you go? There you are. So many beautiful, wonderful faces. All right, public comment has happened. I see a hand on Donna Short, but I did hear from Mr. Short. Is Donna gonna say something this time? Otherwise, we are going to move on. Mallory, can you unmute that one?
No, it was me. I would like to finish, but if I can't finish, then I'll send it to you by email. Did you hear that?
You're muted.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, Mr. Short. I was muted. I don't know why. No, we are having one comment per person, so if you would like to send your comments in an email, that'd be great.
I will do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Armbruster, do you see that one? Okay. Mary, you might have to click on a button that says unmute. She's asked... Mallory's asking to unmute you. So you have to give her permission. There we go. Oh, nope. Where did it go? Mary, are you there?
Just sent the request through again.
Okay, Mary, you have to click on unmute, I think. Because Mallory's sending a request to you. Okay. Doesn't look like it's working. Mary, I highly recommend that you send your comments by email, or you can give a call to Mark Vanderpluug at the City, at City Hall, okay? I'm sorry.
No, I don't think so. They've got... They have to unmute. You can't. You can't, I guess.
Oh, I'm hearing something. Is that you, Mary? Okay. Mallory, did you get it or no?
I sent it through again, so I don't know.
Okay. Nope. Okay, arms down. Got it. All right. Moving on. Jenna? Oh, Mary Armbruster?
Can you hear me?
I can. Yep. Oh, you just muted again. Mary, feel free to call Mark Vanderpluug at the city of Holland, okay? All right, Jenna?
Um, so can everybody see the agenda here?
I can.
Yep, I can.
Yes.
Okay, so starting from the top, we have several agenda items. I know that we've reached out to planning commissioners. We may need to stay past 5:30, depending on where we get. So I appreciate that if you, if you can. If not, then we will need to set up another meeting for this week. So I guess we'll just see where we are once we get closer.
That our motivation to go... That our motivation to go fast.
Um, okay, so there were still a couple of items that we needed to bring back to planning commission for your direction. Specifically, one was regarding the attached ADUs in the low density residential slash R1 zone district. Um, so I do have a comparison table that I'll show in just one moment. But specifically, the items that we still need direction on is that we did clarify that infill reviews do occur currently for all detached accessory dwelling units citywide. So, which is a review of the design standards, which were included in the packet. So we are proposing that that would continue on with the attached ADUs and with these conversions that we've mentioned. Again, on 10,000 square foot lots with a host of requirements that again, I'll show you in just one moment in the, in the chart that I've provided. Um, so as such, we had ended the conversation about whether or not a height requirement for attached ADUs would be needed. So that they are being reviewed with infill. That's up to planning commission, but we would support staff and support that it just be, the requirement be a third of the principal structure, which is also the requirement for detached ADUs as well. Um, something that we just want to get a nod on is short-term rentals. So we, we haven't specifically talked about it, but staff would recommend that short-term rentals also not be allowed on these, on these properties that have these ADUs, attached ADUs or conversions, just as is the case for attached or detached ADUs now. Also, we didn't talk about this either, but currently detached ADUs are allowed on properties that have BMBs, bed and breakfast. So we wanted to clarify whether or not that was something that you wanted to continue or not. Staff is a little bit divided on it, so, so that would be a decision for you.
Jenna, I have a, I have a question, clarifying question with that. If, if the staff is not, if staff's recommending not allowing short-term rentals on an attached ADU or conversion, how would that differ from a bed and breakfast? I mean, those seem, those seem so similar to me.
Right, so that's why staff, staff is split a little bit. But they're, they are two different. I mean, they do have two different requirements with them. The staff that, or the staff member, I should say, that things that perhaps they should be allowed says that, you know, maybe a housekeeper for a BMB could live on a property in, with an attached or detached ADU.
Would it have to call the detached ADU though? I mean, can it just be like an add addition onto the home? Like what difference does it make?
So in the LDR zone district, it would make a difference because you can only be on a 10,000 square foot lot for an attached ADU. For detached, there's no minimum lot size. But also for, in the TNR zone district, you would need to have that lot size requirement in order to build another unit, attached unit, because then that's a two-unit rather than a attached ADU. So, so if you want to go kind of just go from the beginning, do we think that, or do you think that due to, that first of all, that infill reviews shall continue for ADUs, all ADUs citywide, attached and detached?
Yes.
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 Great. And we're proposing that the conversions wouldn't need the infill review because by definition, conversions shall not alter the exterior of the house except for rear door. So we would say to, to leave that provision out.
Yes.
That makes sense. Yes. Infill basically is, you know, how does it appear in the neighborhood? And appearance is not changing.
Right. Which is the purpose of, of the conversion. Um, and then would everyone agree to not have a height requirement? Only keep the size requirement, a third of the principal structure?
Sure.
I agree. Oh, Mallory, could you unmute Lynn Raymond?
Oh, no. There we go, Lynn. Lynn, you get, you get a 30 seconds. Do you need 30 seconds?
I did, I, I was, I, I am inclined to say yes to that, to the height requirement. I just wondered what the, what the rationale for not having a height requirement, what the rationale was for that recommendation.
So with infill review, then the character of the addition would then be taken care of with that.
That makes sense.
Rather than-
That's- Yeah, I think I brought that up at the last meeting saying, you know, why are we having a separate height requirement for, for an ADU? Why not just follow all of the same rules that are already in place for the neighborhood?
Right.
That it's not, you know, that we're not allowing the ADU to be any higher than what was, than what that neighborhood allows. We're just saying have it fit within what the neighborhood currently allows.
Right, but to clarify, to clarify what I, what we heard was for attached ADUs, because already we do have a height maximum for detached ADUs.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I was thinking, yeah, with attached, that, that it needs to, that through the infill and through the height requirement, that's what makes it fit with the character of the neighborhood.
Okay. Great.
The one question I have is for that, that high requirement, are we putting in there that it can be larger than the primary structure? Because if something is lower and it can go higher based on, I don't want it to go overshadow the primary home anymore.
So it has to be a third of the size of the principal structure? But I suppose that the height could go. We could put in that the height would need to equal or be less to?
I would, I would be for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would too. I don't need that. I think this design will actually dictate that, but whatever.
I think it's a good point, Luis. You get 10 bonus points today.
So we're proposing the attached ADU height can't be equal or over?
It has to be higher.
It needs to be equal or less in the height.
Yeah, I, I don't need any skyrocketing detached, but I'll stick with the attic example. Of, it could be above a home and I don't see an issue with that.
Yeah, I, my thought, Andrew, on that is I don't want somebody doing an attached ADU and actually increasing the height of the, the primary structure.
Okay. So then if it's a conversion, then that doesn't apply? Would that be correct?
Well, because with the conversion, you're not changing the envelope of the building.
Yeah.
And that's, and Jenna, just for, just for clarification, because there's been a, you did a great job at the beginning of the meeting and kind of dispelling a lot of the, some of the, the information that's been floating around there. There's been a lot of talk about duplexes versus conversions. And, you know, and I've had people send messages saying, well, it's just a different name for the same thing. I'd, I'd love to have either you or Mark give a good explanation for the, you know, the 64 people that are still listening and anybody who's paying attention, the difference between a conversion and a duplex, because it's a pretty significant difference that we're talking about here.
Right, so I mean, a duplex can be considered a two-unit. These conversions in particular, they have a whole host of different requirements than a normal duplex would have. So a normal duplex generally, though not always, is generally built with two units attached to each other with separate entrances. Though that's not necessarily always the case. You can have a house and turn it into a duplex by way of a conversion. However, these conversions that we're specifically talking about are, are different than duplexes because they have this whole host of other requirements specifically.
And one of those being the owner occupied requirement, correct?
One of them being owner occupied, exactly. Other ones like that we need to notice them to the 300-foot radius that they could potentially go to the Board of Appeals, that they're only allowed on properties that already have only just one unit.
It's, and I wanted, I wanted to, I'm glad you brought up the 300-foot rule. And again, I'm doing this, I think, just to clarify for some of the folks that may be listening out there as well, is that some of the comments I've had is that I've seen that, you know, each property ought to be reviewed individually rather than, you know, allowing these blanket changes. If somebody wants to add, add an accessory dwelling, attached accessory dwelling unit, because they can already do a detached. But if they wanted, if they want to do some construction and do an attached accessory dwelling unit, or they want to do a conversion, we, we've got to notice the same way we do any other change in the neighborhood. So we are looking at these individually, each and every one of them. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes, I just want, I wanted, I knew that, and I think planning commission knew that. I'm not sure everybody in the public knew that. But it's not that your, that your neighbor can just say, hey, I'm going to have an accessory dwelling unit and start construction on it. There's a notice process, there's a review process through all of this.
Correct, and all the other zoning standards need to be met as well as all of these standards that, that, you know, I've highlighted out here for detached ADUs, attached and conversions, and this infill review. So an infill review looks at the exact character of that block and the vicinity of that, that property to make sure that the actual character is aligned with, with that of the neighborhood.
Okay, and there's, there's one other clarification. You did, again, did a great job, but I want to, I want to make sure it's really clear to folks. Detached accessory dwelling units, ADUs are already allowed citywide, even on lots that are less than 10,000 square feet. Correct? And, and all we're, and what we're doing is saying, we're gonna, we're talking about recommending attached accessory dwelling units or a conversion, which is taking your existing home and not changing the outside envelope of that home, but only if your lot is greater than 10,000 square feet. So we're actually being with, with the attached, being more restrictive than what's currently in place.
That's correct.
Yeah, and, and requiring the 300-foot notice requirement and as we're talking about the infill requirement, which is saying it has to fit with the character of your neighborhood as well.
Right, and requiring the setback requirements, the parking requirements. So ultimately, even if someone has a 10,000 square foot lot, they still may not be eligible to even do this because they still have a whole host of other requirements that need to be met.
Okay, yeah, thank you, thank you for that. I just wanted to be as, as clear as we possibly could be for folks because I think that there's a general feeling out there, at least in the emails that I've been receiving. And, and I've received about 10 since the meeting started. I woke up this morning between 11 o'clock last night and 5 o'clock this morning, was 17 new emails about this with a, a general consensus, not everybody, but a general consensus that, hey, there are going to be some major sweeping changes that are going to be happening in my neighborhood. And I just want to make it really clear to folks that, that we're putting some really strict restrictions on this, in, in, in some cases, that are much more restrictive than what's already allowed in their neighborhood with a detached accessory dwelling unit.
Allowing people a little bit more flexibility on their property.
Good, we're allowing a little bit more flexibility, but boy, there's a lot of restrictions that go along with it. And it's, and it's not likely to happen in a lot of places because of those restrictions.
Just like when we, the ADUs, we have not seen that many come up.
Exactly. I, I think people didn't know what the code said, and now they're learning.
Right.
Exactly.
From this process. Yeah, Fred, did you have something?
Yes, just a quick question about the infill review. It's just a side question. Who is doing the infill review? How did we end up with that?
Well, the, the community and neighborhood services director is responsible for that. So at this point, that would be Mark Vanderplu. So-
And then there was an appeal process. Is that still in place?
So that's something that we're working out. You can still appeal a decision. However, we're looking to do it like our administrative reviews where we notice. I mean, we already noticed for these, so we would notice the 300-foot. We would say that staff will make an administrative decision unless, unless someone requests for the planning commission to review an infill. And then that would go directly to you all.
Okay, I think we've only had one of these so far in the past several years. One infill review, not like it happens all the time.
Well, that it goes to planning commission. There are infill reviews that occur all the time. But they happen administratively.
Okay, thank you.
Mallory, could you unmute Lynn again? She had some background noise there. Thank you.
Sorry, everybody. Mallory, you should just text me your email, your phone number, so I-
I don't mind being a go-between.
All right.
Sorry to hijack that, that conversation, Jen. I just wanted to make sure we were clear on all of that.
No, of course. Okay, so then the question about short-term rentals. Would you agree that short-term rentals should not be allowed? I'm going to try to get back to where I was. Not allowed on, on properties with any type of ADU or one of these conversions in LDR?
So quick question on that. The city only regulates non-owner occupied short-term rentals. Is that how the current program is set up?
No, that's not correct. We regulate all short-term rentals. However, there's a, a standard for the owner occupied in the residential zone district that make it so that there's 25 maximum, 500 foot separation. But all short-term rentals need to get a certificate in order to operate a short-term rental.
But there's the possibility of an unlimited number of owner occupied short-term rentals in the city. There's not, we, the city has a place to restriction on that.
Oh, I thought it was 25.
That's for owner occupied that is unlimited, as well as in commercial districts is unlimited. So like downtown, for instance, is unlimited. However, regardless of the number and the buffer, you know, and all of that, still, each of those still need to get a certificate for being a short-term rental.
I, I think the only, the only way I would be interested in a, in allowing a short-term rental in an ADU, whether it's attached or detached, is if it counted toward one of those 25. But I'd be curious to hear what other planning commissioners think about that as well. I've been trying to think through that, and I'm not sure, I'm, I'm not sure. I've thought of every possibility, but that's the, the wonderful thing about being a commission.
I, I do recall having that conversation about ADUs when we were just adding short-term rentals and we eliminated it for some reason. I couldn't see a reason then, and I don't see a reason now, why you couldn't use an ADU as a short-term rental.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a huge problem with it, especially since it's already regulated and has restrictions on it.
Moving forward, are we going to still have a separation and the limited number of certificates?
Again, for investor-owned, short-term rentals in residential zone districts, yes.
Okay.
Mark was around back when that, that was, that occurred. Mark, do you want to speak to that?
Yep, so I, I'll just say right now, so the, the 25 limit, we're starting to inch up close to that. So the last time I talked with Tricia, I want to say that, I want to say that we're over 20 right now, and we, we're not having a huge influx of that. But we do, you know, occasionally, you know, get more and more. So I, we, we will probably, or we very well may likely be coming back to the planning commission once we hit that max, because we might want to go, okay, do we want to lift this cap a little bit, or do we want to just stay at 25? So I, I guess I would say there's a very small kind of background increase in the, in the investor-owned ones anyways. I, I don't know if we'd want to throw this towards that bucket also. Yeah.
How does it affect staffing?
We're doing fine with that. I mean, it's not a, it's not a significant amount of work that we have to do. We do go out and look at these, I believe, once a year. But our housing staff does that and we just work that into the schedule. So that's, that's fine.
Tricia's shaking her head. She said not once a year.
Is it once every, maybe it's once every three?
There you go. Tricia, you can talk.
Yeah, we, for the investor owned properties, once the pilot program went away, those all got turned into three-year inspection cycle for all of those short-term rentals. So Mark was really, really close. We currently have 22 investor-owned rental properties registered in residential zone districts. So we're only three properties away from hitting that maximum. And also real quick, when the short-term rental ordinance was first put into place, we did not allow them to be in an ADU because the purpose of the ADU was to provide affordable housing, age and place options for property owners. It was not to encourage vacation rentals or suitcase rentals in the neighborhoods. So the ADU was originally created with a different purpose in mind. So if the Planning Commission wants to change that, obviously that's fine. We like not having short-term rentals in the ADUs for our tracking and rental purposes. It makes things a little bit cleaner. If it's either owner occupied or it's investor owned and they're renting the whole property and we don't have to figure out who's in the ADU and they're limited to two occupants. So how many people are they renting to if it's a short-term rental? So for staffing and code enforcement, it's a little cleaner if we don't have short-term rentals in the ADUs.
Okay, Lynn?
Yeah, I would, I, I appreciate that, Tricia, that clarification because I, it's my inclination. I don't, I I don't know where we were headed with those two, but I would, I would say that no to short-term rentals or ADUs on B, on properties of B and Bs because you know that Jenny, you put the master plan attachment down there that says, we're talking about the housing stock. And I think the, the purpose of the master plan wasn't necessarily to add temporary housing as much as longer term housing. And so I would, I would say no to both of those.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Tricia has convinced me as well. I, I would, I changed my mind. Thank you, Tricia, for doing that. That's exactly why I asked the question. Issues that I hadn't been thinking of. And that's, I think you're, you're spot on. So no, I would be, I'd be inclined to say no to that as well.
I agree with that.
I would agree with that as well.
Yes. I can be on board with no.
And.
So that being said, you know, there would be, I gotta believe there would be a large demand for ADUs to go with, as short-term rentals. There would, there would probably be a decent demand for that. I mean, we're, we're not in favor of it because as we've noted here, it's not, it's not hitting the, the motivations for doing that. But I gotta believe there would be a decent uptick in investors wanting to do that in the neighborhoods. But then, of course, that would be creating some traffic issues, perhaps congestion, kind of cutting at other things. So we're not in favor of it.
Yeah, that's, and I, I agree with you on that, Mark. I think, I think that's what, if I read Planning Commission right, we're, we're saying no for the same reasons.
Yeah.
Especially if we're trying to increase our housing stock, it totally goes against our goal.
Yeah, I'm not saying a no because of increased traffic. I don't think that would necessarily be an issue. I think it's just doesn't, it doesn't follow the master plan goal of increasing long-term housing stock.
Yeah, we just need to allow on-street parking all the time. Just kidding. We're not going to talk about that.
Yeah, maybe.
As soon as it stops snowing, the first year we don't get any snow.
Right.
Then I'll, then I'll listen. Okay, Jay.
Did you have to go to an emergency? Does anybody know?
What did you say?
Did Jenna have to go to an emergency?
I don't know.
We need a bathroom break.
Yeah.
Maybe she got bored.
So we can move on to the ADUs in, in B and Bs, right? That's the next issue on the agenda?
I, I said no to that too. Yeah. I mean, that's what I said anyway.
Well, then we're done with number one.
Right. We're done.
Cool. All right.
Number two.
Moving on. Mallory's got all the minutes, so she's in control at this point, right?
Is Mallory there?
I apologize, I'm here. That I have a bit of an emergency. I'm not, I don't have to leave right this moment. But I will have to leave in a little bit. It's about my son. So just letting you know and Tricia's going to go tell Mark that he'll have to take over at that point.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I do have, I'm not, I'm going to bring up before I move on.
Prepared to run.
Jenna, go when you need to.
Andrew said he has something to say before we move on.
Okay.
Yeah. Didn't want to interrupt. I was just wondering, there's like a lot of concerns about non-owner occupied rentals in the TNR district and such. And I wondered if the attached ADU policy could help us keep some more owner occupied rentals with those restricting of the lot sizes. So if someone, it adds another point in the market. So instead of duplexes in which it could be totally investor owned, non-owner occupied, there'd also be market forces for an owner staying there and helping to rent out part of their home. Wondered if you guys had thoughts on that or if I'm crazy and we should just move on.
I, I think I see where you're going there, Andrew. I'm just not sure how functionally that would work from a staff perspective. Are you, are you suggesting, you know, reducing, you can have a reduced number of square foot, feet. So like reducing down to the 32, the 3250 square feet per unit, but only if owner, if one of the units is owner occupied? Is that what you're talking about?
I would, I would keep those regulations the same. Just remove the 10,000 square feet and, or remove the LDR restriction and the 10,000 square feet and just have attached ADUs citywide. It could help staff in some way, clearing up Udo as a whole, perhaps.
Jenna?
I mean, that, that's a major difference from what has been proposed now. So that would be a decision that Planning Commission could potentially take. That would mean, so specifically that would mean that in LDR, in the LDR zone district, they would be allowed on lots that are less than 10,000 square feet. And then specifically in the RTRN zone district or TNR, then that would mean that they were, they would also be allowed on, on a lot regardless of what the square footage of that lot is. So, so for that, it would be less than 6,500 square feet. Again, if they meet all of the other standards. So that's, that is up to you. That's a major diversion. That's, you know, really up to Planning Commission to determine.
I would recommend, hey, folks, I would recommend we, we got a, a ship that's kind of sailing now. We might want to look at other kind of last minute adjustments with stuff, but you know, we, please keep reminding, you know, please remember, none of these things are static and, and they can always be changed in the future. So, you know, a year or two from now, you want to come back and adjust some things, we can do that, but we, we really kind of need to, to focus, focus things here, really kind of get the funnel down and not, and not keep expanding things out at this point in our review.
I think incremental changes are important and we can always make them more restrictive later. Or allow them later.
Yeah, I think it's something interesting to think about in the future, but that, yeah, that's not a side hike I want to take right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Chris, did you have something to say?
Basically similar to what everyone just said, but I think it adds a layer of complexity because we'd have to try to draw the line between an attached ADU and a duplex that happens to have the owner living in it. And so staff would have to determine which one is this and what rules is applied. I just, I'm not sure that it's worth that level of extra complexity.
All right.
And that's part of the feedback I was looking for too, is if we were making this more complicated for staff. But if it's less complicated, then we can go the way the ship is sailing.
I think in the TNR and MDR districts, that's where you'd end up with that blurred line that would be confusing.
Okay.
Let's go to number two.
And I have a quick question.
Oh, sure, Luis.
Because I think Andrew posted, like, I think maybe I interpret it a little bit differently, but I know we are getting a lot of pushback from the community in terms of a lot of the changes in terms of setbacks and the square footage lot. I mean, I guess it made me just think based on what he said right now. You know, that the, the public is telling us to go a little bit slower to do it at a specific case that we can modify. I think we are, but what if we, so throwing out the field right now, but a lot of the changes that we're doing, I think, are going to be positive. So what if, as something that we allow in the TNR or these districts where we brought down the lot sizes, what if we put that same place of having that larger spot only if it's an owner occupied? So at least that way, it'll be more progressive and we can kind of see it that way. Versus just allowing investors coming from a, a large lot from 9600 to the 6,500, that's allowable if there are owner occupants. And we make that kind of a general across. I know we haven't talked about that. I know that's something new, but that may slow it down and that may get a little more comfortable capability from people to see that it is something that it is going to be slower progression. And, and you know, I'm just throwing it out there because I don't know what people think about that. It just kind of spawned on me when Andrew was mentioning his comment.
We may want to run, if that, if that idea gets legs, you may want to run it by Ron. If the only distinction between two things in a zoning district is whether it's owner occupied or not, I'm not, I'm, I'm not, you know, a lawyer or prepared to say.
Right.
By Ron.
Okay. Maybe we can run with that later. Is that okay? Jenna, while you were gone, we did say the ADUs on properties of B and Bs.
ADUs are allowed?
No.
We all agreed, I think.
And what about short-term rentals?
No.
No. No. Can I, Brooke, I have one more thing I'd like before we leave LDR.
Yeah.
And I don't want to, I don't want to go down, I don't want to go down too far a trail, but there's one, one other issue that when I was looking at the CNR district and versus the LDR district and noticed that the side, side yards in the cottage district were seven feet, but we're proposing only five feet in LDR. And, and I'm, I'm wondering if may, maybe it makes it simpler and helps alleviate some of the concern that folks have if we move LDR side yards to seven foot minimum rather than the five foot minimum that we've proposed. Because then we're, then we're uniform at least between the two. And it just seems odd to me to have a smaller side yard in LDR than in Central Park.
Well, that's why staff had recommended the five feet in Central Park. So.
And we, and we went with seven in Central Park and I'm, and I know I'm, I'm, I'm throwing this in last minute, but when I looked, when I, when I noticed that in reviewing for the meeting today, I'm like, why are we doing that? Why are we doing seven in Central Park and not, and only five in LDR?
And while we're having this conversation, why did we eliminate and not less than a total of 18?
That was for simplicity's sake.
But see, that just makes buildings so much closer.
Dan, are you on the call still?
That's the person.
Dan Tiley.
Dan Tiley. He is there, but he's, his video is not there, so he may not be able to speak.
There he is.
He's gone.
Dan?
Dan Tiley. There you go.
What was the rationale? Hi, Dan. What was the rationale again for increasing or decreasing the R1 zone district or the setback, side setback to five feet?
Well, no, the purpose for change, I think Dave's question was, why are, why are we not using a combination of numbers to create a total side yard setback?
But then the other question was the five rather than the seven. That was the.
I thought we went back to seven feet in LDR. I'm sorry. I actually looked at something today. I thought I saw it somewhere. Maybe it was an old document. But I, I believe that, yeah, LDR should go seven and seven. We already are reducing the setback total because normally you'd have an 18 foot total side yard and then LDR would go to a total of 14 and so would Central Park. It was just for, it was for flexibility and for, I've had a number of people come in and trying to squeeze just a reasonable size house and accessory uses into these smaller lots and even in LDR, the smaller lots in LDRs where it, you know, seven, if seven feet is, is good enough for one side, what's the difference if it's seven feet on one side or the other side? That's the, that's the argument I have to make with them. Because that's what they're asking me. It's why is it, why is it a total of 18 when, you know, why is it pushed to one side or the other side? So in most cases, I think the, the the effect is the same if it's on both sides. Now, in a lot of situations, people are not going to take advantage of that because they need to put a driveway in there. Okay, so they're going to probably increase that to start with.
I think another reason, we think another reason we reduced it or looking to do it to five to five, or perhaps now it's going to be seven to seven is we're looking to reduce the minimum lot width in the LDR district too.
Absolutely.
And so, I mean, right now the R1 is at, I think it's 70 foot minimum lot width. I think we're looking to go down to, is it 60 feet Jenna or 50 in the?
I believe it's 50. Chris, do you have that in front of you? It's on Holland.
Yeah, yeah. No, I got it. It is 50.
Okay. But we've got 50 foot lots in Central Park too.
Correct. All over the city.
Yeah.
The depth in the, in the Central Park is, in the cottage neighborhood is different though as well.
And that's why we've reduced it to 20 feet rear yards. Because the depth is the problem.
Right. So when we're talking about the LDR though, the depth is much bigger, sometimes twice, twice the size of this, of the cottage neighborhood.
However, we can do the seven feet if that is more comfortable for everyone. Seven foot side.
I would be for that.
I would be for that also.
Yep.
Sounds good. To number two, is that correct?
Yep.
Yes.
Let me get to the. Okay, so number two there, as Mr. Levers had mentioned and some others speaking from the Central Park neighborhood, they are requesting some other considerations. And so, and so the, there, there's really just two standards. And then there's some other detailed information in terms of, of other language, like the infill regulations, et cetera. So if you recall, they had asked for 30 foot minimum front setback. Staff recommended 20 feet. Now they're requesting 25 foot minimum setback. And staff is still recommending the 20 feet. So I was just actually, while, while Mr. Levers was speaking, I was measuring on the, on our GIS, our, our parcel information. I was measuring the distance between the property lines and the street. And at no, in no case did I see, I mean, it can't be for sure. I didn't measure all 83 homes or properties. However, generally the, it's a five foot minimum distance between the property line and the street. So when we say a setback, the setback is not from the street. The setback is from the property line. And therefore that five feet is then, and, and that's really what the reason, the rationale that we still are recommending that 20 feet. At 20, that five feet is already there because it's the distance of the actual right of way, which is plenty of room for people to put their leaves and their. which is plenty of room for people to put their, uh, leaves and their, uh, trash cans in staff's opinion.
So you're saying from the road to their property line, there's already five feet?
That's correct.
On every parcel.
Okay, and I did not look at all eighty-three, um, but I did look at probably about twenty and there was a five foot minimum setback.
Okay.
Can we get Dan's take?
And just to be clear, this recommendation is actually not just mine. This was Mark, uh, Dan and I meeting on this, but certainly Dan can speak to this.
Right, there are a couple of streets in there that, I mean, most of the streets are thirty-three feet right of ways with fifteen to sixteen feet roads somewhere around there. But there are a couple of roads, Beach and West End that are twenty-three to twenty feet wide. So if you subtract a fifteen, sixteen foot road, uh, you don't have five feet on each side. Um, you have five feet total, which is like two and a half. So if, if there was room to move, I would say we could potentially modify that based on the road width.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
On, actually you could say the setback is twenty feet, except on roads that have a right of way smaller than thirty-three feet, then uh, then twenty-five is worth.
Is that complicated or is that okay?
That gets a little complicated, Dan.
There's only two roads. There's only two roads that do that, so it's probably going to never get used.
I'm okay with it as long as the city staff is okay with it.
Yeah, if staff's good with it, that's my concern is that you guys implementing this.
Well, and the other thing is, is, uh, is an example on, uh, West End, uh, you've got a really narrow road. A new house was built there, quite substantial house built there on the, uh, on the lagoon. And when you're standing on the road and it's only twenty feet wide right of way, realistically, there, these houses are closer to the road. And so they have a different feel on a road that's only twenty feet wide or right away that's twenty-five versus twenty or thirty-three.
Right.
Uh, and there, there are a lot of homes in Central Park that are certainly not twenty feet from the property line on the right side.
Absolutely not. They are not now, and I think everybody has agreed on that, including them. I think just for the future, they're looking to, to, to help create, or I guess not exacerbate any, uh, any potential, uh, things down the road. So I think on the few chances that, that, that we get development on those roads that are smaller than thirty-three feet, I can understand potentially giving someone else a little bit more room because twenty feet's about the, the length of a suburban. Uh, they're really about eighteen feet, and if they only have two feet to the road, I can understand the turning radius. Um, gonna see a lot of mailboxes down probably.
Folks, I'm gonna throw, I'm gonna throw in here too. So there's been so much, uh, discussion about, you know, vehicles. And it seems like the discussion really is kind of becoming, you know, here again, how do we design um, for the all-important American vehicle? And I think we start, we're starting to lose, uh, the urban design of what this neighborhood really is, what it really was when it first began and, and it, and it's a cottage, it's a cottage neighborhood. These folks want to retain, we want to maintain the cottage feel, the cottage atmosphere of this neighborhood. And I, I just fear if we, if we had these big front yard setbacks, a twenty-five foot setback is a standard suburban setback. We will, you know, we're basically telescoping in our, in our zoning code then that over time we want this central neighborhood area to become suburbanized. We want it to have a suburban type development feel. Is that really what we want? Remember, you zone what you get for or, or what did Mark, Mark say?
You get what you zone for.
So, do we, do we want to retain? No, I'm not, I'm not trying to discount the, you know, the safety concerns and stuff like that, but we, do we want to retain a charm that comes with cottage-type homes being up closer to the streets? Or do we just say, well, you know what, folks are, they're, uh, moving into this place and they're making these, they're not cottages anymore, they're year-round homes. And we ought to just let them convert them into year-round homes and then they ought to be set back like this kind of suburban type situation. So what do we want? What do we want here? So, I mean, I, some of the staff members are just kind of like, you know, twenty feet, even twenty feet, you're going to get kind of a suburban type feel to it. That's kind of why staff, we were originally kind of, you know, thinking ten foot. Well, we understand there's legitimate concerns from the neighborhood, so, you know, that, that's kind of why I'm kind of hanging tough with twenty feet. But I mean, ultimately, you planning commission, you get to, uh, you get to, uh, decide with this and, uh, in city council ultimately too. But just please keep in mind, it's not just vehicles and designing for our vehicles. It's designing for, it's really designing for that, that, that neighborhood and what kind of a feel with the buildings and the relationship of the buildings to the street do you want? And not only want now, but you want fifty to a hundred years from now, so.
Um. I have something to chime in with, but I do want to say I, I really agree with what Mark just said, but I also want to chime in with something a little more technical. Um, Dan, are the center lines approximately in the center of the pavement in most streets in Central Park or for anyone else who might know that? Or do we have more right of way on one side than the other in a number of scenarios?
Dan, Dan, I think needs to be unmuted.
Oh, sorry.
No, I think he's got an answer.
He's flailing around. He's got a, there we go.
You're asking about the lines. So there are no lines, uh, I would say almost all of the roads there, they don't have lines.
Oh, no, I don't mean a painted line. I mean, if you take the center, the center point of the right of way.
Oh.
Right, so if the, if the right of lines are here and the center line, the, the center point between them is here, is the pavement in the middle or is it shifted? Or, I mean, how, I mean, obviously it probably varies, but what do we generally?
Yeah, that's not an uncommon question. The, the answer is I'm really not sure because I, I have to go based on the guesstimation that roads are centered, um, in the right of way, but as you know, that doesn't always happen.
Yeah, I, my suggestion, I guess, would be, you know, to try to get at this issue of, well, a twenty-foot setback from this house is actually closer to the pavement as this from this house, is to potentially add an additional required setback from the center, the center line of the right of way.
Oh.
And I know that adds complexity and I just said, hey, we were trying to simplify and, and that's been the whole thing for three years, but, um, maybe that, that's sort of a sales safe, right? If, well, add ten or fifteen feet to the setback and you have to be that far from the center line in addition to being twenty feet from the right of way line, uh, it may never come up. Or maybe it comes up and it saves a house from being closer to the street than we really want it to be. I don't know, uh, just a thought to throw out there.
Now, historically, have we not just had renovations that, uh, allow them to use the same distance from the street that they have today?
Uh, currently, currently, I'll, I'll speak to that one. Uh, currently, we have, uh, a section called the, section of the ordinance called the closest house kind of rule. It's kind of a term that we use that you're allowed to build your house as close as the closest house on that side of the street. Okay, we are looking at taking that out of Central Park. The use of that particular section will not be available to anybody in Central Park.
Oh.
That's a, that's a, that's a really important point, Dan, because I, I sat on zoning board when there were a whole lot of requests for variances and special exceptions in Central Park and, as everybody's heard ad nauseam, I'm sitting in Central Park right now. I love this neighborhood. I love the character of this neighborhood. I want what we're doing personally, and this is a purely selfish comment that I'm making. I want the character of Central Park to stay as much like the character of Central Park is right now, and that's what I'd love to see us do. Um, and that's what worries me about the twenty-five feet and when, you know, and Mark's saying, hey, we're, he's, he's exactly right. You get what you zone for. And when you go through and you go to the end of the chart that's up on the screen here to the very last thing, when it talks about, um, about rebuilding of non-conforming structures due to destruction. Well, I want to remind everybody that Central Park is essentially one huge non-conforming neighborhood. Um, there are not, people are not twenty feet from the, from the road right now. And when you look at what section thirteen point oh six of the Udo says, non-conforming structures destroyed to an extent at or greater than the state equalized value from, from the Board of Appeals to be rebuilt non-conforming. Non-conforming destruct, structures destroyed to an extent less than the SEV can be rebuilt to non-conforming. But my understanding of the reading this is if it's more than that, it cannot be rebuilt non-conforming. And am I understanding that right? That we are potentially putting the people in Central, who live here in Central Park in a position where if their property gets destroyed, they're not going to be able to rebuild what's there. And they're going to be forced to rebuild into a situation that doesn't look like what the neighborhood looks like right now. Am I, am I right on that, Mark and Dan and Jenna?
Yeah, we got the fix. Dan, why don't you talk about that?
Well, funny you should say that because just, uh, yesterday, we, we included or wedged in another section into that non-conforming section that basically says if your house is burned more than the SEV, basically, which is fifty percent the value of the house, you are allowed, you're going to go to the zoning board, you are going to be allowed to build on the exact foundation that you were on as long as you're not building something that is larger or more non-conforming than the existing building. And the reason for that is because there's a lot of, people get a lot of heartburn out there when they're concerned that the, the, what they had, and insurance companies do this as well, what they had is only one, one fire from being removed from, from ever happening again. And so we get that and all this, you know, we get this in all zone districts. It's not going to just be Central Park. It's going to be everybody who owns a house, it's inconformant and it burns down. You are going to be able to rebuild it exactly as it is, not bigger, not more on conforming. It gives a lot of people a lot more of a peace of mind.
That makes me a whole lot more comfortable, Dan.
Okay, well then let's give the twenty-five they asked for.
Well, but I'm still worried about somebody buying up the, the property next door to one of the, the folks here tearing, tearing it down and being forced to do twenty-five feet away. And then, and then o- over time, we lose the character of Central Park. Now, I might not be alive at that point, but.
But is that not what your neighbors are asking for?
The, I'm, I, I think that's what they're asking for.
Right, they're asking for twenty-five. We're, we're recommending, uh, twenty feet. And, and to get back to the car situation, there's a lot of situations where it, it, the right kind of development can provide a driveway alongside the structure, which will allow them more than twenty feet to put a car and create turning radiuses. So you gotta think about that too.
I think twenty's fine.
Yeah, I could be convinced to bend on those two streets that were mentioned. If that's the good compromise.
Like I say, if, if it, if something burns down or if something mysteriously burns down, it's going to be built in the same foundation that's there now. Or it'll be a remodel on that foundation, correct?
Correct.
What was your point, Andrew? Would you say that again?
Uh, when we were talking earlier about writing in an exception that the rules are a little different for the narrow or worse streets that are the problem that we're talking about. Uh, it's a little more complicated, but, um, you know, Central Park has always been the exception, so.
Yeah.
Dan, you, you said you can live with it. Are you the one that's going to have to live with it? Are you the one that's going to have to live with that exception or is it somebody else?
I will do, I will, yeah, it's, it's me. Um.
Okay.
I'll do whatever you guys want to do. Like I said, I can see both ways working. Um, it's just something to think about with the small, the small roads, but it doesn't mean that then they don't have to be more creative with their, their, uh, potential project.
Okay. And so.
All right, um, who was for the twenty feet only? Say your name. Nobody's for twenty feet only? Okay.
I'm not.
The impression that I was.
I'm for, I'm for the hybrid, if that helps.
I'm for the hybrid.
Hybrid, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Oh.
So now we need to develop the hybrid.
Yeah, can we make this a clean, uh, almost like a motion so that we can understand what the person is proposing it and what everybody's voting on?
I don't think we need to vote on this, right?
Well, we can. To know which way you're going to go.
I, I think we're, we're voting on twenty-five feet on all but those two narrower streets.
No.
I think.
Other way around, other way around, twenty feet works.
Okay.
Those two narrow streets.
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Let's get this right now.
Yep.
Okay.
Good, good thing you asked, Dan.
Okay.
Twenty feet, except for those two roads, because the width of the road is so much smaller.
Right.
Okay.
Are we comfortable just naming those roads? It's Beach and.
West End.
And Lake or West End. Which, which one is it? I don't know.
Nor, normally you're going to say any right of way that is less than thirty-three feet.
Right, just keep it that way.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm missing one road.
Right, because that's not, we, we know that you're perfect though, Dan, right? Now, let it be known that Dave does disagree, so. Right, Dave?
I think, I, I think twenty-five works because the houses that are there are going to be rebuilt where they are. And there's not a whole heck of a lot of empty lots out there.
Well, there's potential for them to be rebuilt, but there's also potential for someone to buy the next door lot when that person's house burns down and they sell the lot and then they buy them on, or build them on stracity on two lots.
And correct me if this has been discussed with staff and, and I wasn't there, but, um, if you tear down the house intentionally, you lose that non-conforming protection and you can't rebuild on the same foundation. You can't do that on purpose. You can only, it's if it burns down, you can rebuild it that way. If you do it on purpose, you gotta go back twenty, twenty-five feet or however much we choose.
Mm-hmm, yep.
So just to make sure that's clear, you don't get the option to build a nicer house on the same footprint.
Dan, is that true? I thought you just said otherwise.
No, he's, he's correct. I mean, if, if you tear it down either by some form of whatever, demolition, then, then you lose the right. It's only when you have a unforeseen tree fall on the building, a fire, tornado, hurricane.
When the value is less than the SEV.
Oh, it's going to be actually more.
Oh, okay.
Creative renovation is what they call it.
Yeah, we've, we've had, when I was on zoning board, we had issues out there where people did some demolition and then found out that they couldn't even rebuild what they had in the first place.
I just remember helping, helping build a cottage twenty-five feet wide on a twenty-five foot wide block.
Boy. Um, all right, I, Jenna asked me to take over the, uh, facilitating the discussion. Um, she had to go. Um, I hope everything's all right with, with her and her family. Um, so the next thing on the discussion list is a minimum number of off-street parking spaces. As you can see, the representatives of the neighborhood are asking for two and you can see their, um, you know, the reasoning behind that with the narrow streets. You know, staff is recommending one and, and the reason for that is that that's consistent with the entire rest of the city. And we know off-street parking is its own issue that Udo can't really address. Um, and we still decided one.
Oh.
Yeah, so I don't know what the PC's thoughts on that are.
If, if they all, if they want two parking spots, they can create two parking spots, correct? We're not, we're not restricting them to one.
It's a minimum one, minimum.
One is a minimal. Let's not change it.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Next thing on the list as we continue to move. Um, infill review. As with regard to, uh, with the Central Park, there were some, some questions or some requests from Central Park residents in terms of protecting views and green space. Um, and then they have requested, uh, delete something that I'm actually not exactly sure what that section is in the current ordinance, one ninety-eight G one. Um, but the, Jenna's note here is that that's basically already revised. Um, so Mark, I don't know if you have more context on that, but it sounds like that one is already addressed. Uh, as far as the, uh, views and green space one, um, you know, staff is recommending against that one. Um.
Yeah, if I can add just a little bit with that too, I mean, I, I understand. I mean, that's part of the character out in that neighborhood too, is the, is the views people can see from their property to the lake and down the streetscape and stuff and see, and seeing the water, that's, that's, that's really kind of part of the character, but, uh, but for us to get in there and potentially kind of start adding. Uh, but for us to get in there and potentially kind of start adding a weight factor to uh, an infill review or something like that. I'll tell you folks, I do these infill reviews and if somebody wants to put an addition on their house. And then suddenly staff has gotta do factor in. Well, how is that addition gonna potentially impact the view of somebody that's four or five houses back from the lake? No, I mean, I, you know, it's kinda like you, you own the view to your property.
No.
And, you know.
I can't see it driving down South Shore, then, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, so we've, we've always kinda, yeah. We don't do this stuff historically, never have done it, and I really do not wanna start doing it with infill reviews. I think it's a real, it could be really, really slippery. And.
No, we support you, Mark, it's okay.
We support you strongly on that. If you don't own it, you don't control the view.
Yep.
There's height standards, there's height requirements, there's building requirements, there's all that stuff in place for.
Right, right, yeah.
We can't get into that, it's not our purview.
You can't be changing the setback on someone's property, right? Oh, it's seven feet for everyone except you. You have to let everyone else see, you know, so. And it, it was a little different situation with some of our big commercial developments that we're talking about.
Right.
Including the one over um, by South Shore Village that people were talking about earlier in the meeting, but for a house, I don't, I don't, I'm not comfortable with that either.
Well, and this is a cottage neighborhood. People have built bigger homes there, yes, but, and there's still some smaller ones, but we can't, we can't control those views.
Yeah, so reading the agenda, um, it says these items weren't requested for consideration. So I think, uh, keeping time in mind, maybe skip the table.
Oh, yeah, good point.
Oh, okay.
On to three, right?
If you guys are comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm taking over on the fly here, so.
No, you're good.
No, you're good.
Alright, I'm gonna take you guys back to. The agenda then. Number three is regarding um. Oh, Jenna's. Yeah, it is, uh, South Shore Village, 17th Street. Um, I'm going to open up what Jenna's provided for this item. Um, and we're talking primarily about the south side of 17th Street right there. Um, we, there's been, obviously, the South Shore Village Form-Based District was created and designed with the north side in mind. Uh, with that connected parking lot and the buildings all have approximately the same setback, um, as the discussion here is. Uh, final decision almost on whether we extend that to the south side where the buildings are less consistent. And Andrew, if you wanna kinda chime in on. Um, what your thoughts were and why you wanted this on the agenda.
Yeah, so um, what you said, when drafting the ordinance language, it was just thinking of the north side. Um, so the setbacks are 50 to 55 feet, which keeps in line with that storefront area. Um, and it's all great and it's all um, conforming. Uh, the issue I was taken with is that we decided to flip it um, without really discussing what those implications would be. Um, and I think if we wanna provide um, a walkable neighborhood, maybe 50 to 55 feet is too much. Um, I'm great with keeping it with where it is on the north side, but maybe not on the south with redevelopment. And then also requiring storefronts only. Um, and I'm a big believer in that um, storefronts aren't the only ways to get walkable neighborhoods. And that you can develop walkable housing too. Um, and that goes along with our priorities as a city, um, zoning for more housing. So I just think we need to take another look at the south side and see if that's what we really wanna do or not.
So is your suggestion to move it to the NMU category or to alter the South Shore Village? The, the problem with altering the South Shore Village Form-Based is this decides specifically for that form.
Right, yeah.
And so I think there's some logic, to me, there's some logic to going to NMU. Uh, which gives you, as we've, we've, we've really crafted that, right? So there's a few different ways a developer can go in that district. Um. With the one exception of now we're gonna have the setback on the north side, but the south side is over time gonna come to the sidewalk as required in NMU. So this is the sort of uh. Push and pull we've had. Uh, with this.
Yes, I, I don't have a clear solution, um, open to staff's recommendations, uh, along with other planning commissioners on what makes sense.
Like, you're asking what do we wanna see in that space now that Family Video is closing and there is kind of an open field in that.
Right.
And then we have kind of an industrial looking building that has multiple uses right now and. I mean, it's very approachable from the sidewalk. It doesn't feel dangerous to try to get to those buildings because. There aren't huge parking lots in front of them. And then I think, is there an uh. Not physical therapy, is there a physical therapy office over there too, I think?
Chiropractor, maybe?
Chiropractor. Maybe that's the next block, actually, I'm not quite sure.
Yeah.
Um.
I suppose your other option here is the RMU District. Um, which allows up to 15 feet of front yard setback and won't create quite as much of a mismatch potentially. Um, that obviously is a wide open district as we've talked about and that um. You know, which would allow for a lot of flexibility and redevelopment. I will say that just because a Family Video closes doesn't mean the Family Video building is going anywhere. If anyone is familiar with what happens to those in other communities.
I'm just kidding.
So Chris, if I, if I can ask, I, I might have missed it. So what, what are we proposing for a zoning on the south side, 17th Street there?
I think we've got three options. We, we do the South Shore Village Form-Based. Um, which would over time require a similar character on the south side to what's on the north side. Consistent setback, but you'd have a setback, right? You wouldn't keep it at or near the sidewalk. Uh, mixed use, but you'd have to have a retail frontage, as Andrew pointed out. Um, for the new buildings. Uh, second option would be the NMU District, um, which allows for, which brings your building to the sidewalk. Um, and has a little bit more limited use list than the RMU District. So the, some of the quasi-industrial or industrial uses would be out. Um. But mixed use would be available as would um, the type of primarily but not totally residential building that we've talked about. In, in RMU, right? We may have one storefront and the rest is residential, that kinda thing. Um, and then the RMU District, which opens things up a little wider. Uh, it would allow buildings to come near the sidewalk up to five feet, but would also allow them to setback as much as 15 if they wanted to. Um, would allow mixed use residential, retail, would allow solely residential, would allow a, a broad, it would also allow a light industrial. Um, so I think those are the, the three options I think would be, that would be appropriate, and I could see how none of them quite fits exactly. Um, but I think that for a developer who may wanna come in and take out or replace one of those pretty suburban commercial buildings. They all give options.
You said RMU was the last one?
Yes.
Okay.
And is there a staff recommendation? I mean, I might paper, it says there is.
Yeah, I mean, what are we proposing for that right now, Chris? Do you know?
Right now, it's, it's SSV in the Form-Based Code.
What is?
Think that, I, I think uh, that Jenna's staff recommendation was to keep that, but I don't. This, this is what she provided, I don't think it necessarily says that. I don't know if she's here or not, it said she was in for a moment.
I think she's just, she was just listening for a little bit.
Okay.
It appears she's in.
Yeah. I can confirm that's Jenna's opinion.
I'm sorry, Andrew, did you, I'm, Andrew, I'm getting a little bit lost here. Could you tell me, could you say again what your concern is here?
Yeah, my concern is that the setback is too far. Um, and that uh, it doesn't really um, lend itself well to a walkable community. 55 feet can work, but um. Along with this being Form-Based Code, we're really regulating the use. We're saying it needs to be commercial, it needs to be 50 feet back. Um, I just think we're over-regulating it and we're discouraging what we wanna see as a city. Um, that being housing has been our priority for a long time. And saying it needs to be 50 feet back, it needs to be commercial, it needs to be a storefront. Um, I think great, keep the north side the way it is, but allow more flexibility on the south.
I would.
I apologize, I.
Jenna?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. Um, so yes, the recommendation is to keep it, the staff recommendation was to keep it South Shore Village. Um, and that is because streets really should be unifiers rather than dividers. Um, and because we all like the South Shore Village, it is still walkable, but it is, it is a little bit different. Um, we would, uh, we would recommend that it stay that, that same uh, character.
On both sides of the street.
On both sides of the street.
I can go behind that because I do appreciate that there, there's a walkway between the two, so it's a very. I would like to see more consistency, just like, I mean, kind of like downtown, downtown has those um, crosswalks, just like that area does. And to create that consistency of them facing each other. I don't know, I don't know if that industrial building's gonna go anywhere or Family Video, but there, there is an open space there that. That could be used, but.
And then also that it's a, it is a commercial district, but it's, it's a buffer area. Um. Uh, that's very different than the character of uh, NMU, for instance, and, and those areas of RMU.
Yeah, I think we have RMU just to the east.
Yeah, we do.
So we have a lot of it in that area, so I think, I think that could be a good solution.
So it sounds like it's RMU versus SSV. Do we have a consensus or a majority on either side?
I'm, I'm comfortable with what the staff is recommending.
Mm-hmm.
Sure, me too.
I heard three, do we need to come?
There's another one, you got another one, Chris.
Okay, I, I think, I think, I think we're keeping it SSV. Anyone, did we have serious objection to that, other than Andrew, sorry?
No, you're good, Chris.
I don't.
No, this, this is one I think that if we need to re, if we need to take a look in another year or two. We may be able to do that. We may miss an opportunity by doing that, but I, I'm, I'm hesitant to. To change something at this stage of the game from where we were going.
Yeah, you're, you're, you know, if a developer asks for a rezoning, you'll be able to tackle it then.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Moving right along, folks.
Yes, next on the list, we have a few zoning map changes. Um, that I have to bring up here. Uh, oh, here it is. We could hopefully. Yeah, get through these pretty quick. Okay, uh, the first one is the 14th Street Christian Reform Church. The request is to go from NMU back to TNR. Which makes it consistent with what it is now. Are there any objections to that?
Nope.
Oh, no objection.
Okay. Um, alright, the next one is the Centennial Inn on 12th Street. There are apparently neighbor concerns about the proposed switch from uh, TNR to NMU. Um. And you can see the, the Jenna's comments or staff comments there about the uh, you know, Centennial Park plan and the potential neighborhood node there. Um, and Centennial Inn wanting that. The types of land use rights that come with being in a mixed use district and not in a residential district. Um, there isn't a specific staff um, recommendation here. Um. I think one, one option is, as, as noted in that paragraph, is that if we make a TNR and Centennial Inn wants a rezoning in the future. They could come ask for a rezoning and then we can handle that as a one-off request. Um, rather than wrapping it into Udo, which to me personally has a lot of, uh, there's a lot of logic to that.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend that. I feel, what makes me feel uncomfortable with this particular one is because they, they requested the rezoning. Ahead of time, so it just feels like they're kind of um. Take, not, I mean, not negatively, but able to kind of take advantage of the process um, that we're in and not. Go through the regular process of requesting a rezoning, so if we could keep it RTRN and then if they need a rezoning in the future, I would agree with that.
Is that?
I agree.
I agree.
Objection to that, okay?
If I can just.
Oh, sorry, Mark.
Real quick, um, so that, that is, that's the right way to go with this one, folks. Just wanted everybody to know too, the Centennial Inn. Um, that is um, in the historic district, so anything, anything that occurs there.
Gets reviewed.
Cars, expansions, needs a COA, so um, the Historic District Commission will be all over that if anything occurs there in the future, so.
Okay.
You have a lot of control with that property, so.
Yep.
Yep.
Alright, um, what's next on the agenda is kind of a review of where we've been on the TNR District and why we, why. The uh, current proposal for square footage came about. Um, I guess in the interest of time, I'm kind of interested to see what you guys want to do with this discussion. Um. I don't wanna, I, I, I see value in it, but it's not a, it's more of a. Okay, we, we've heard a lot from the public on this and we wanna make sure it's clear what's going on, but. Two and a half hours in the meeting, whether that's the, the time to do it, I'm not sure.
Well, I don't think we want another meeting this week, so.
That's true.
I, I signed on for the long haul on this meeting. I wanna, I wanna try to get whatever decided, decided that, if we can.
Okay, alright, well.
Go through it.
Alright, sure.
3250, is the 3250 really what we're thinking now?
That's what we have right now. Um, and that, i- if you want me to kinda go to this bullet point about that. Uh, you know, that came up with some, it, when the financial feasibility uh, discussion was had with Ryan Kilpatrick and his organization. Um, I believe that was also when we got the um. The diagrams that you've seen um, from Nick and Harye that discussed the idea that if we keep the current. Uh, square footage requirements, that that actually would result in people potentially tearing down two houses in order to build one lot with a duplex. Which I don't think any, I think everyone agrees is not what we wanna see. Um, in the.
Not what we're gonna see.
Um, or, or that that's, or that that's financially feasible, right? So, so having that as allowed is A, we don't wanna do it, and B, no one might do it at all, so what's the point? Um. So I think then the idea was, okay, those aren't actually working because they don't reflect the existing lot sizes in the neighborhood. And therefore they don't actually either open the door to do anything realistic or open the door to what we would like to see, so. Uh, then the, the lot size were adopted, or excuse me, they're not adopted, very much not, they were reduced. Sorry. Um. Sorry, my computer tweaked out for a second. But those lot sizes were reduced to something that actually fits what the lot sizes in the neighborhood are. Such that these things could be done on some lots where they may be appropriate, and that's where um. And that's where the uh, the, the proposal we have now is. The other thing, and I almost want, almost brought this up earlier, but I do think it's important to bring up now, is the rules that stay in place. In the TNR District on things like parking. Um, in, and pavement. I think we heard, we hear a lot from the public about, well, you know, people are gonna have to pave their whole yards. We're replacing green space with parking, there're gonna be more cars, and, you know.
Possible.
Well, I, I don't know if I'd go that far, but there are controls in the ordinance, they're in the existing ordinance and they're proposed for Udo as well. In terms of what you could do in terms of parking on a residential lot, and that includes resident, you know, residential lots with two, three, four units. Um, and y- you can see the percentages here, 75% of one side yard, which means 0% of the other. Um. Which uh, with, with some allowances for smaller yards. Uh, you know, corner lots, we're paving right up against the corner, there are restrictions on that, including setbacks and percentages. Uh, the rear yard may only be 50% paved. Um. You know, and, and, and I could see that there is, you know, oh, well, it's only 25% paved, they're gonna have to go to 50% paved and they put in the second unit, that's not great. Uh, but it, it, you know, we do prohibit fully paving uh, backyards. We do prohibit. Paving right up against somebody else's house, right? Fence requirements and all that, so all that is in the ordinance now. I think Planning Commission knows that, but I, I know that that was, that point was.
Chris, the other thing to, to point out is that the reason why we keep it at one vehicle also is to reduce the amount of pavement. So.
That's a good point, and that, yeah, that, and that goes to the whole, the whole, the same issue, right? We have two units on a lot, that, we don't want that to mean four cars, even though it, you know. Or at least we don't wanna require it to mean four cars.
Right, I, I wanna, I wanna make a bit of an editorial comment too, in regard to a lot of the emails that I've. Received and comments that we've received on this. Um, of, of people saying, hey, you should, you should try it, or you should look into what's going on at other places. I wanna make sure that the public really understands. We didn't just come up with, with these um, these suggestions or these recommendations out of thin air. There was a whole lot of background research done, a whole lot of, of looking into what works, not only in other communities that have done these kinds of things. But, but Chris, as you were saying, specifically within Holland, how would this fit specifically within Holland? So we haven't been looking at, you know, what's some kind of blanket thing that we can, can be doing. you know, what's some kind of blanket thing that we can, can be doing, but very specific, very tailored recommendations to this community based on what we've seen works and doesn't work in other, in other areas. And I think this is a really good example of that, that these, these were not just arbitrary limits that were put in there, um, or recommendations that are being made. These are very specific ones that are there.
Yes. I think the, I, I think the, sort of the purpose of this Jenna item, and I apologize for the sirens.
If you, if you have an emergency, you know, you can head out too.
The, uh, we are, uh, our, our office here, McKenna's office in Grand Rapids is across the street from the central fire station.
Oh.
So that happens five or six times a day. Uh, so apologize for that. But yeah, I, I agree, Mr. Mayor, and I think, um, you know, that's important to note. I think a couple of other things that Jenna wanted to make sure we cover here, uh, infill design review will continue, um, as it has. You know, the language has been simplified, but largely the infill process is, is, is what we've had. The rental inspection program will continue, um, and that obviously is outside of Udo discussion. If there are any changes to be made to that, that's a separate discussion. And the Hope Neighborhood District will continue as it exists, right? So you have that rectangle south of Hope College that does not allow multiple units.
Can we spell that?
Yeah.
Okay.
There you go.
Now we need to discuss the square footage again.
If you want to. I think the purpose of this was to recap where we've been.
Okay.
We have heard a lot of public comment on it.
Yep.
If the planning commission wants to revisit it, then we can do that.
Okay. Anybody?
Uh, we, we looked a lot at these maps. We looked at a lot of different numbers and a different, and different possibilities. And I think that we ended up coming up with these recommendations based on the, the fact that they work with, they work with the lots, they work with the blocks and the neighborhoods. And we were very intentional about making sure that there was not too much change in any one neighborhood or any one block. And, and I'm, I'm very happy with the numbers that are here. I think that, that, that the term gentle density is going to be really, really, bear out in this, that it's not going to be dramatic changes in these neighborhoods. And actually, uh, Lynn Raymond and I had a conversation about one particular property, and Lynn, you're going to have to fill in the details on this, about one particular property that I think is a fourplex right now, that somebody was complaining about as a, as a rental unit. Is it a threeplex right now? I can't remember. I think, but I think what I, my recollection from our phone, from our conversation was that, that, that particular property would not be allowed under, under the rules we're proposing, would not be allowed to be as dense as it currently is. Is that, am I remembering that right?
That's right.
Yeah. So, so what we're doing in, in some ways is actually reducing the amount of density that certain properties would be allowed to have. So it's not, it's not a major change to increase density across the board. It's actually correcting some things that were done in the past so that if changes are made, the density would actually decrease on some of these lots.
So you're saying that current triplex that exists on 12th Street that a lot of neighbors have talked about would not exist under the proposed square footage for a triplex?
Yeah, it would only be, only two units would be allowed.
Okay.
It's non-conforming right now.
That's right.
If it burned down, you could only build a duplex there. You wouldn't be able to build a triplex.
Yes.
Exactly.
Gotcha.
I think the other thing that I just wanted to, you, you, you skipped over this, I think, Chris, was the, was this, the certificate of appropriateness for the historic district?
Yes.
I, I think it's just important to remember that that's another key layer in, in managing what happens to lots and, and houses in that, in, in those districts. And there are three, right? So.
Historic districts?
Aren't there three?
I believe so.
Expansions, one, and then.
Yeah. Um, yeah. And that is that, you know, there are, let's put it this way, in, if someone buys a house within the historic district, let, let's like walk through what they would need to do to add an extra unit to that.
That would be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you want to add an extra unit to it, first, your, your, your lot size has to be big enough, right? Then you come into the city, present your plan, the city will review, review against the infill design standards and review it against the parking standards, right? And Mark, the infill design comes with notice to the neighbors, correct?
Does.
And potentially appeal to the planning commission.
Yes.
The Historic District Commission.
And, and, and then, yeah, that's where I was going. And then you have, or I don't know what order you'd take that in usually, but, and then also the Historic District Commission. So it's, it's a lot, it's a lot of hoops to jump through. And while the purpose of Udo is to make sure it's a thing that can happen to increase the housing supply, that all of that ensures it won't happen randomly, willy-nilly, or without the neighbors knowing.
Right.
That's the idea anyway.
Exactly.
Thank you, Lynn.
Yeah, appreciate that Lynn. Thanks for pointing that out. All right. So are we comfortable with where we're at then?
Yeah, it does.
I do not recommend any changes in that section.
No.
I agree with Brooke.
So.
Thanks.
Gotta happen sometime.
I know, right?
Which my screen share here.
We're almost done, right?
Yeah, we are.
Right.
Okay. So the next thing here, um, you are now looking at a page from the draft Udo, correct? Is the tree replacement?
Oh, that's trying to be bigger.
Okay. Let's get rid of.
Else I'm just gonna be like this, and that's just weird.
Andy too.
Sure, it looks good, whatever you want.
Better?
Oh, well, yes, that's good. Thank you.
So.
That's good. Okay.
In Article Six of the Udo, and this has been something that we just haven't been able to get to on the agenda several times, is a requirement to plant trees, to replace trees for anyone who tears down five or more trees, uh, that are over a certain size, as you can see here, right? Deciduous over six inches, uh, circumference and can if first over ten feet. And if they're healthy and non-invasive, right? So, uh, that's a lot of caveats. So this is something that's not likely to happen, to impact a residential property owner who just wants to take down a tree in their backyard. It's designed to discourage a developer from buying a wooded lot and tearing down all the trees. Because even with those caveats, that developer is probably looking at having torn down thirty, forty, fifty. In the case of another community I've been in where, uh, they had similar rules, seven hundred, uh, trees that must be replaced. So.
Ziv.
This then brings up, uh, you know, basically the rules for how they have to be replaced. For the ratio of replacement trees to trees taken out, which is not, not one for one. And, you know, the, the minimum size for what gets planted. There's also an option here for what it's, uh, for what we call payment in lieu of trees. So if you're a developer, developer comes in, does that, they have a bunch of trees they have to replace, um, and they simply can't fit them on the lot. They could write a check to the city. The city would then use that fund to plant trees in parks or other city-owned properties around, around town. Thus ensuring that the overall tree canopy stays relatively similar, right? So the hope here is A, prevent the clear cutting in general, and B, if trees come down, that there is at least some replacement, uh, for them. So are there any, uh, questions, concerns with that section?
Andy, whatever you want, I'll support you.
Yeah, that Jenna and I worked on this together and this is, this is good. So I, I like it.
That, that was going to be exactly my comment. My, my initial reaction was gee, that doesn't seem like enough trees. The ratio doesn't seem right, but I'm, I'm going to defer to Andy on this one.
Yep.
Me too.
We, I need to fix this chart, but yes, that's, um, because these go with, you know, that goes horizontally in the, it makes it look vertical. Anyway.
At the risk of just opening a can of worms here, I'm fine with this. I just wondered, why is the ratio good?
Yeah.
One to one.
I'll kick that to Andy, I think.
Thanks. Uh, yeah, so it's, that's, that's not an easy question probably to answer, but we, what we found is a lot of times in urban sprawl, trees aren't where they're supposed to be anyway. And so we end up, we end up looking at that and, and changing how we, how many we plant. I, I don't even know a good example off the top of my head, but, um, we thought that we could handle that in-house, um, planting that many. And, um, we looked at a couple of different options and, and this is where Jenna and I landed. I have to probably pull my notes back out and look and I can get you guys a better answer on that, but.
That'd be great. That'd be interesting just to know.
Yeah, but it, it, it revolved around urban sprawl from, from my action. So we did this a few months ago.
So Andy, would that be something like, they would plant one tree over by, you know, um, old orchard, but you'd plant a whole different tree over by country club?
Uh, no, no, the, the area doesn't really matter that much. No.
The topography?
No, not so much. Yeah.
This is why we refer to you.
And I'm not helpful. Folks, I, I don't, I don't want to be a wet blanket here, but sometimes I have to play that role. And just to kind of, uh, put some perspective on things here too. So if this is to apply to private property, and it looks like it is, um, I mean, we all agree that trees are a wonderful, wonderful thing to do. We don't want trees to be cut, be cut down, et cetera, et cetera. I'm going to tell you though, that this is going to come, come with a cost, okay? And I'm going to give you a real live example. Habitat and Jubilee Ministries just purchased a month ago, less than a month ago, the city property at 285 West 36th Street, okay? They're probably going to be coming in and probably clear cutting that site. Or pretty darn close. There's going to be hundreds of trees that will probably come down. So, and they're going to have to replace those trees and all these trees are going to cost money. So I just want you to know, I mean, this, I'm not saying don't do this. I'm just saying there is a cost. Okay. So people will be paying for this and it's going to cost real money. And in that situation, you know, we're trying to, this is one of those situations, we want to try to help affordable housing kind of situation to keep costs down and all that. But here we got another situation where we got environmental concerns and we want trees to be, you know, we don't want them cut down, but if they are, we want them to be replaced and there's a cost to that. So things kind of rub against each other as we're trying to meet some of these goals through our code. So I just, this is just a prime example where I just wanted to bring it out to you. This is a great thing to do, but there's a cost involved with this to developers and to housing developers, and they'll have to pay that cost many times. That is, that, uh, we see that then for the end users who are going to be living in, in these units, it's going to increase costs. So that's all I wanted to say. Well, and I know, so all that big, they're not all that big either. I mean, most developers aren't going to cut down seven hundred trees, you know? It's not, they're not all that big. So.
And I think that's a, that's a really perfect, that's a really good example for, for, um, a, a reason to replace the trees. Because one of the concerns of that neighborhood was the fact that we were cutting down so many trees. And so while I certainly am sympathetic with the fact that it's going to cost more in particular, because they're, they're developers of, of, you know, a, a variety of, of, of cost housing, um, I still think that it's, it's, it's a way to support both the, the need for, um, increased housing stock and, uh, meeting our goals for sustainability and, and the environment.
Absolutely. I agree.
And I just assumed they'd be down long before this passes city council.
Well, it's an example, Dave.
It will be. It will be now. It will be now.
And maybe I missed a meeting, but I guess going back up to the, the count of how many meet that requirement, we are still requiring the developer to provide something, right? Cause I know we were talking about survey and a couple of things. So how are we going to ensure that they're actually cutting fifty trees whenever it wasn't eighty trees?
There is a requirement here, um, for a professional tree survey to be submitted as part of a site plan application.
Sure.
I buy an arborist, yeah, buy a licensed arborist. And, you know, I think to Mark's point, that does have cost, right? But I think it also, to Luis's point, ensures accuracy, right? Just the same way we require signed and sealed plans to make sure the buildings are built where they say they're supposed to be built, right? Same thing with the trees. Send in an arborist, tag the trees, get the tree list. Add, separate out, these ones have to be replaced, these ones don't.
Hey, Chris, what about if they cut all the trees down before they submit for site plan review?
No, that's a good point. Um, because this does say, well, I, I mean, do we, there's, I think there's, the city have a number of options there because even if you, I don't think there's anything in here that says this only applies when you're applying for site plan approval.
There's not. And that, that's like, that's a good question because somebody that owns the property can do whatever they want with it, right? You could, you could, you could, curse the trees, you could.
Tear it all down. So could there be a fine?
I mean, there's a violations of penalties section, um, that includes fines for violating the zoning ordinance. And this actually, given how long most zoning violations take to execute, this is maybe especially a more common one than most, right? Cutting down a tree without approval. Um, although again, any, any number of trees removed under five is exempt. So your average property owner removing a tree isn't going to come into this. It'll, it's, it's going to be larger and maybe not a developer necessarily, but.
Does this specify the size of the lot?
It does not. Just the number of trees. That's the controlling factor.
Okay. Can we require, like, can we throw in the size of the lot?
Like a minimum, so that if you're under half an acre, you're exempt, something like that?
Yeah.
I mean, we could, although at a certain point, how many small lots have five trees that are going to get taken out? I mean, I just, it seems redundant.
Always right where you want to build the house.
I suppose.
Build around it. Um, I'm not quite sure what to do with that.
Yeah, I see this causing a lot of headaches with enforcement and fines and fees. And I'm leaning towards Mark's warning about, I don't know if I should use this phrase, but is, is the juice worth the squeeze here?
That's a Marv Martinism.
I know. I was like, wait a second. I've heard that before.
I've heard that.
I mean, it's up to you guys, right? It's up to planning commission. What do you want to do with it?
Perhaps we move forward, but I, I, I think that this one is, we're probably going to be revisiting this one within a year or so. Um, as we, as we see this kind of unfolding in real life situations, we, we will probably be revisiting this one, but I, I, I think we want to move forward, um, but not be revisiting.
I, I do have a couple of things to point out that can be helpful right now, moving forward. The table with how many trees removed, I think we incentivize people to remove more trees with the two buckets. So if you have nineteen trees, you have to replace, uh, what, eight and a half? But if you have twenty, you have to replace four. We should just have one bucket.
That's a good point. That, that does incentivize the removal of additional trees, doesn't it?
You'd have a lot of people rumored to have twenty trees or twenty-one trees. Or even the table says greater than twenty and then five to twenty, which one is it?
Yeah.
I think the table does work because you're right. It'd be the, the inflection would be a twenty-one, but the, the idea that you have to replace fewer trees, if you cut down twenty-one versus twenty, is something we should definitely correct. I mean, is the consensus simply to say, you know, one per two or something like that universally or something like that?
I was gonna say one for every five, but.
Or one for five. I mean, at that point, you really aren't requiring that many.
Right.
And, and you're only probably disincentivizing someone who's cutting down three hundred. Right? Cause at a certain point, it's like, well, I cut down five trees. And now I gotta plant one tree. Well, I was going to have to plant fifteen trees for the landscaping requirements anyway. What's sixteen? Right? So you're not just incentivizing anything. But on the other hand, to Mark's point about cost and to the actual problem that we're trying to solve, which is the clear cutting of lots, maybe that makes sense. I don't know.
Andy.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I like, Andrew's got a good point. So.
So wait, one replacement tree per five removed universally?
I don't think we looked at it the other, I don't think we looked at it that way when we were talking about it.
Maybe just reevaluate it based on that and then come back to us, Andy, if you think you want to make any changes?
Yeah, I can ask Jenna about it.
Okay. And then discuss lot size too, if we want to even include that or not. I don't care either way, just, just a suggestion. All right.
All right, that leaves us with one more agenda item. I have a hard stop at six, and this next one is regarding, you know, processes and, and things like that. So Mark, I don't know if you'd be comfortable taking over at this point to talk about, you know, how the planning commissioners should view rezonings and PUDs and stuff like that?
I'm the one that raised both of these issues to Jenna.
Okay.
And so if it's okay, I'll just explain myself about what this is about. I think that's what Jenna was alluding to the last time we got close to this topic. Is that okay, Mark?
Yeah. Chris, why don't you hand it over to Fred, and that way we can just keep going?
Yeah. Um, I believe, maybe I can't.
Or maybe.
I don't know if I have the ability to.
Mallory.
Mallory.
Can you do that?
Mallory's in charge.
That's what I saw.
Yeah.
Mallory's the boss.
Yeah, I can share my screen. If, is there something specific, Fred, that you wanted to go over?
Not specific, but more general. So I'm happy just talking about this issue, because I don't think the way that this is written, it's not proposed to be resolved yet on this page. So let me just explain myself. I've asked.
Sorry, Fred, but I'm gonna take off then.
Bye, Chris. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Good meeting. I will see you soon.
Thanks, Chris. So, so I had raised a couple of issues about how we reserve, how we review site plans, and how we review requests for rezonings. And they're very different from each other. The, the first one is, in the existing zoning code, we have three or four pages in our zoning code that instructs or, or suggests to planning commissioners how we should review site plans. And it goes through a lot of different topics. You know, when we, when we look at a site plan, we're suddenly faced with a whole lot of different issues. There's landscaping, there's setbacks, there's heights, there's environmental concerns, there's just a lot of different things, and they touch upon a lot of different parts of our regulations. And so the way the current zoning code looks is that it's almost like a checklist. You can go through it, and after you've gone through all the list of all the things that we're supposed to be considering, then we can make some comments, make recommendations. So it's very helpful to us to have this list. The current Udo doesn't have that. All of the site plan considerations are in different parts of the Udo. And so I had asked Jenna about that, because I, I for one was very comfortable going through that list that suggested how we're to look at site plans. They're so complex, and there's so many parts to them that I, I didn't like the idea that we were gonna have to go through all the different parts of the Udo to find it. I mean, the Udo is so huge. It, it makes it, and so she, her response was, was that they're gonna be writing a report that addresses each one, and each one will be located in the Udo, and we can look it up and see what it actually is, but they're not all together someplace. And because they had to go one way or another, they wanted to go this way. They didn't want to have a, a list all together in one place. I'm telling commissioners how to do this. So that's, I, I was waiting to see how it got resolved before I made my next set of comments about it, and I wanted to bring this up to all the planning commissioners. And so it's, it's, it's a wide-open thing, which I don't think is gonna be resolved until we actually see what, what they've come up with. So I'm gonna switch now to go over to the zoning code. For a while, over the past year and a half, we've, we've been asked to do two things at the same time. One is to look at changing somebody's zoning, and at the end, then also look at the site plan that goes along with it. And I noticed that we were kind of thinking that the rezoning was not very an important question, but the real question was site plans. And so we would spend a lot of time looking at the site plan, and we would just assume that the zoning request was gonna go through. And so I first started saying, look, these are two really separate issues. The request for rezoning is much different than the request for approval on the site plan. And so I asked that they be separated so that we could give a full weight to the rezoning. And, and Mark and Jenna have, have complied with that in the past several that we've been faced with. But my second question was about rezoning. I think, I think rezonings, requests for rezonings are some of the most important things that we do as a planning commission. I think that, I think that people have a right to assume that there's the zoning at their property and around their property is gonna remain more or less stable, and there has to be some good reasons to support a rezoning. And I think it's a very important thing that we have, we haven't given its full weight. And so what I was suggesting is that we, we approve a list of criteria that will be used in looking at a proposed rezoning. And I have noticed that other communities have this list, and we have kind of a list, whenever, you might not know it, but whenever we are requested, Jenna does have a list of things that she goes through, but I don't think that list is comprehensive enough. It's not rigid enough, and it's not, doesn't protect the people that are opposed to it very well. And so I wanted to raise this issue, that we need a, a better set of criteria for dealing with proposed rezonings. And the, the answer isn't here in this page, just the issue is here. And I think what they're saying, staff is saying, is that they're gonna look at this and come up with something. And so I just wanted my, my chance to explain both of these issues to you, and I think they're both pretty legitimate. So that's, that's really all I have to say about this.
And you're talking about, you're, you're talking about individual properties requesting a rezoning.
Yeah, not a big policy, not like Udo.
Like, once this is approved, moving forward, we would, this, this document would be developed so that, in fact, would assist us in our future activities.
That's what I believe is being proposed here. And, and so I, I just wanted to let planning commissioners know that I think this is a very important, these are very important matters.
Yeah.
We need to make sure that it's right for us.
It's like the ZBA. I mean, you have a very clear and criteria to do something pretty major.
A very major thing.
Well, and, and that's helpful not only for us, but for applicants. So that applicant knows what, what criteria we're going to be using when we, when we take a look at these requests.
Absolutely.
Um, for the neighboring properties, and for, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? When they want to come back and go against what our recommendation. We have a firm foundation to stand on.
That's it.
Fred, hey Fred, in the way, is this kind, so we do have kind of the findings of fact that we, that we do whenever we have a rezoning. Jenna kind of answers, you know, this
Yeah.
this list of nine or 10 questions or whatever, you know, is it a spot zoning? Does it comply with the master plan? Is it fit with development trends or whatever in the area? So is it kind of like buffing up those questions and?
Making that list. And having a discussion amongst us, planning commissioners, about that criteria. We never really looked at that criteria as a group, and so we've just gone along with it, but I think the criteria is not good enough.
Okay.
And so.
So is it, it, so this isn't like established criteria by, by law, what we can, we can kind of sort of fuss with that with that as we choose?
It's not. I mean, I've asked that question, and I have not seen any established criteria in our zoning code. It's just something that we do as, as a matter of practice.
Yes. I mean, when we look at any rezoning, I mean, really kind of per state law and stuff, the major thing is it has to be in compliance or conform with the master plan.
That's their legal, the legal side of it.
Yeah, so I mean, you, and I don't, well, and I don't even know if a state law would require that. I mean, that's just good zoning and good planning practice, and if you, if you do a rezoning that is not in compliance with your master plan, you're, you're kind of out there on the edge a little bit. And if somebody would want to contest you, or contest the city with that, they might have good standing to do so.
So I'm not.
Plan compliance is a good one, but there, there's other very good ones, too. And I, I don't know if you're suggesting those be put in the zoning ordinance, or perhaps in kind of a policy guidebook or whatever that the planning commission used, but I, I think it's a good idea and to update that stuff.
Okay, and that's all I'm saying. I'm saying we should have a discussion about this. We can't decide it right at this moment, but I think it needs to be better, and it needs, we need to have a talk among the commissioners about this.
Thanks, Fred.
A question for you, a question for you, Fred. Because I know you said you looked at other communities, and they have a more established list. Is there a protocol when they do have a site plan to come with a rezoning request? Because I mean, the one I think I'll refer to about is the 40th and Lincoln Gas Station. I think planning commission was pretty half and half about the rezoning, but the site plan itself was good. It's just a matter of, did it fit on that parcel? So I think, have you seen anywhere where they do something where they tackle on the, the site review first? Or where they look at the, the rezoning, I mean?
I have not.
Have you thought of anything about that?
Quite, quite often, they can be handled separately, and they don't have to be accompanied. Usually a site plan, well, sometimes a site plan doesn't even require a zone change. So I think most zone changes require a site plan. But, but no, I, I have not seen how they, how they interact with each other in other communities, but I have been looking at criteria for zone changes, and and there's quite a few different things out there that, that are quite good. I think better than what we do.
There are some other communities that, you know, if you have, if you got a rezoning and a site plan, there's many communities that say, listen, you gotta finish the rezoning component first and get that all the way through city council. And if that's approved, you know, then come back with your site plan. So we've never really done that. We've always kind of we've wanted to be more friendly and streamline our process, and, and we think that we can do that as well as meeting all the requirements, but but certainly, I mean, we can, we can draw this out if that's what folks want to do, but I, I think there's something to be said for being able to continue to do rezonings and site plans at the same time.
In sequence, though.
Yes.
I mean, the, the rezoning has to go first.
Well, but I, no, I'm, I guess I'm saying, I think there's something to be said for being able to do them concurrently also.
No, no, I mean concurrently, but in sequence, that the plant, that the planning commissioner looks at the rezoning request before looking at the site plan, even in this meeting, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
But they're separate issues.
Well, we vote on them separately, anyway.
Well, we've just started to, yeah, I mean, you have to, but.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. That's fine.
We'll do that, Fred.
Okay.
Good idea.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Are we good?
We're good, I believe.
I think we've reached the end of our agenda.
I don't want to be shocked.
And, and it's a study session, so you can just declare the meeting done.
Therefore done, folks.
No? All right. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Thank you to those in the public. And.
Be safe.
Have a good night, stay warm.
See you all next month. We have work to do.
Yes.
And drive by that site.